Recording.
Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask my colleagues to please unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes, present.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. Lopara? Mr. Meta? Ms. Palango Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Mr. O'Neal?
Present.
Ms. Robinson?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion of the School Committee to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Council 93 Local 2814, also known as our shop storekeepers. To have this discussion in an open meeting could have a negative impact on the committee's bargaining strategy. The committee will return to public session at 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopara? Ms. Palango Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. At this time, I'll ask my fellow members, the superintendent and staff to log off from this public session. Join the executive session using the Zoom link sent out by Ms. Sullivan. We'll see you in a moment.
We started.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson. The committee just returned from an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Council 93 Local 2814, also known as our storekeepers. To have this discussion in an open meeting would have had, could have a negative impact on the committee's bargaining strategy. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the April 26 meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Verde Anu, whoops, sorry, Cabo Verde Anu, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The interpretation feature has been activated. Click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment close today at 4:30 p.m. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you use to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. We'll begin with the approval of the minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 12, 2023, School Committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopara? Ms. Palango Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neal? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Committee members. I'd like to begin, I have a little bit of a lengthy report with some updates, but I'd like to begin with just a brief update on the exam schools following the update from the last meeting. We have now sent out the exam school eligibility notices to the 7th, 9th, and 10th grade families with the corrected GPAs. The team is meeting daily to ensure accuracy for the remaining processes so that we can get the invitations out in early May as scheduled and without any further delay. We've also worked, which I'm very excited about, to bring back Ernest and Young, which we refer to as EY for our external validation for the invitation data. We have great confidence in EY, given our past experience and working relationship with them, and we look forward to working with them again on something that's so important. I want to thank our families for their patience as we finalize the process for this year and to share that we've already begun to work on the plan for next year. We realize how high stakes this is and we want to make sure that we get everything right and timely. Some wonderful news that I shared publicly just before School Committee. I'm happy to share with committee as well and to the public here, but it's been my privilege to share that Dr. Mariel Novas has joined our team as the new Senior Advisor of Organizational Development and Equity. Dr. Novas is an educator and a justice advocate. She's promoted healing, equity, community empowerment through coalition building and organizing throughout her career. She's an immigrant from the Dominican Republic and a former BPS student and teacher. Dr. Novas has served as the Chief of Learning and Community Engagement, most recently at the Museum of Fine Arts. She also served as the Transition Director for Mayor Michelle Wu's mayoral campaign. And she was also the Director of Partnerships and Engagement for Massachusetts at the Education Trust. In that role, she convened the Massachusetts Education Equity Partnership. She will work closely in her role with me and with the leadership team to ensure that equity is a through line for our organization and for our work. Through that equity lens, she will also help us with our organizational development, looking at, you know, how our systems and teams can work together to really maximize our resources and solve the biggest challenges we face organizationally. Equity is crucial and critical to our work in this district, and it's about ensuring that our students and our whole community are treated fairly inequitably in a way that helps them to feel seen, heard, and supported. It's about closing achievement and opportunity gaps and creating concrete results that help us to move forward, again, for our students. I'm really excited to have Dr. Novas back. I had run into her in her last position, and we had some really exciting conversation about all that would be possible here in BPS. And so I'm thrilled that the circle brings her back here to home. I know she's ready to roll up her sleeves and dive into this important work. And so I hope that you can join me in welcoming her with our big BPS welcome. And I think you can see her on the screen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Super excited, everyone, to be back at home, as you just said. Thank you.
It's great. Really, really happy with how talented and just incredibly, you know, there's no sky, you know, no limit to the sky right now for our team. It's just it keeps getting stronger and stronger. So, welcome aboard, Mariel. I also wanted to update the committee on the April Acceleration Academies, as I know you had asked about this the last time. So this past week, we held during the school vacation week, the April Acceleration Academies at 33 schools. Again, our focus was in the transformation schools across the district. And in this particular April Academy, it served more than 1,700 students. To give you a perspective, in February, we had the Acceleration Academies in 32 schools, and we had 1,450 students. So we saw a significant uptick. We're still calculating and pulling together the attendance, the data, and we'll give a more full report out on that. But I wanted to at least give you the update that we had seen a nice uptick of students in school sites. Students during the April accelerations were engaged in really looking at English Language Arts in depth. They had a focus on project-based learning and enrichment that were aligned back to the district curriculum. They also participated in experiential learning format with students with math skills, learning through flower arranging, designing airplanes, building monuments, you know, based on historical figures for their country of origin, and others who looked at world entrepreneurship. So it really was applied mathematics in, you know, in a deep way. And that's what we aim for in those acceleration academies, to connect experience, learning, fun, all together. And so really, thank you to the staff, who also made those acceleration academies possible, and to our parents for making sure that students were able to register for them, get there, and participate actively. We will report out at a future SC just a little bit more about, you know, what we saw in terms of overall attendance, participation, and baselining. But just to, you know, really give you a sense, it's that connection in the acceleration academies of, you know, teacher, dedicated teachers and paraprofessionals, along with experience, you know, within the schools, and hands-on projects. So I think that overall was a big success, and we were very pleased that so many students participated in it. Along the same lines, as we shift thinking about the summer, you know, we're working to, you know, bring the school year to a close in a strong way, but to also go into the summer and see that as an extended period of learning and enrichment. As I've shared before, you know, we're investing the largest number and range of opportunities yet for our students. We've added capacity to serve upwards of 17,000 students, and that includes a range of programs. Fifth Quarter, which we do with Boston After School and Beyond, Early Focused for our youngest students, High School Credit Recovery, the Expanded School Year for students in special education, and the Exam School Initiative, just among a few of those. We launched the registration earlier this year. This came up upon parent request to try to understand what was available and to get students registered. And so we actually launched it March 22, and that was almost a month early. And then here we are, you know, now, you know, in late April, and we've already registered about 4,500 students. So we're thrilled about that. We want to get the message out that these opportunities are available. They're on our website. We're working through the schools, through our teachers, through our social workers and counselors, and guidance counselors, and family engagement. So, you know, lots of information there, lots of people to support and helping you to get registered, but we really want to fill and exceed those 17,000 seats if possible. In the same way, I think what's unique about this coming summer is that we're deeply committed to expanding inclusive practice, just as we are during the school year. We want to make sure that summer opportunities are there for our students with disabilities as well. And so we're expanding those inclusive opportunities this summer. We're offering more inclusive opportunities in fifth quarter. With programming, we're also allowing for more choice for our students between the traditional extended school year programming and the fifth quarter offerings. So we hope to, you know, meet, you know, what parents have been asking us for, special education parents have been asking us for, and we're modeling a lot of it off of success that we had last summer in integrating our English learners into the fifth quarter. You know, we had last year 65% of our multilingual learners attend the fifth quarter summer programming, and 35% attended standalone. So we were able to sort of use that model and extend that now to our students with disabilities. We're excited about it. You know, we recognize, you know, we're not going to be able in this first summer to support students, you know, in all programs, with students with IEPs. We will learn from this summer, but we hope that this is a beginning, a foundation for which we can build so that we truly have inclusive summer experience. In terms of the outreach piece, our teams have been really, you know, hitting the ground at the community events, spreading the word to our families about registering, both in schools and at those community events. Families can find us at several of the upcoming events. Saturday, May 6, we'll be at the Parent University's STEAM at the Dudley Street Neighborhood School, and in fact, I'll be at that, and the Wake Up the Earth Day Festival in Jamaica Plain. So those are, you know, we've found that to be successful, to go where parents are, to make them aware of the opportunities, and then to be able to support registration right at those events that are happening. All of our family liaisons, the Welcome Center staff, the Hub coordinators, the Office of Multilingual Learner, parent specialists, have been trained to support summer registration, and we're really seeing that training such a broad staff is paying off because it's reaching so many more parents. And we'll continue to provide updates as we become, you know, get closer into the summer. But right now, 4,500 students at the end of April is fantastic, and we hope to keep that going. For, I wanted to also, some of you may have seen in the news in the media yesterday about White Stadium. And I just wanted to take a brief moment to address the city's efforts to reimagine White Stadium as a hub for BPS athletics. Owned by the city, White Stadium in Franklin Park was built in 1945, and it's been a place for BPS students and families and members of the community to gather for sporting and cultural celebrations and much, much more for decades. But it's also been in desperate need of repair for many years. And to that end, the city released yesterday a request for proposals, or what we call an RFP, seeking submissions from entries to send in their proposals and ideas about how to, you know, to lease the space and then how to help to be able to renovate it. In the RFP, the selected private entity would lease and fund the renovations of one half of the stadium. And then the city will fund the reconstruction of the other half. There was a fire decades ago that destroyed the inside of the East grandstands, and that space has not been usable for some time. The results would, you know, bring our students access to state-of-the-art athletic facilities, equipment. You know, there'd be, there's a proposed eight-lane new track where we could host track meets and new high-quality grass field for competition. And it would really give, has the potential to give our student athletes an opportunity to further improve their leadership skills on and off the field. As we explore what seems to be an incredible opportunity, I think it's important that we keep our students and our student athletes at the center of the decisions. Discussions are ongoing, and they'll continue with any private entity about the access and the use of the space for our students. Our understanding is the city will host community listening sessions over the next several months for residents and families to learn more. And we look forward to seeing what comes of it, of the RFP and the next steps, and we'll certainly provide updates to the committee as they become available. Many, many bright spots over the course of the last time we met. First was One Boston Day. This was an opportunity to celebrate One Boston Day, a day of service and togetherness, which was the Marathon Monday, with this year's annual Red Sox Hat Day. And we celebrated it at the Condon. Just want to appreciate the Red Sox organization, the mayor, Mayor Wu, Pedro Martinez, who was there, Sam Kennedy, and especially school leader Camilo, who really did a wonderful job with the Condon students and staff to have a wonderful celebration there. Pedro Martinez and his wife shared information about the Pedro Martinez Foundation mentoring program, which provides sports training opportunities with professional athletes and sports industry professionals and access to educational events throughout the year. He shared the program, you know, with students at, you know, as the program, it's predominantly for young people, 13 to 18. The Condon School students actually read the book, Growing Up Pedro, which was written by Matavares, which talks about Pedro's life and career. So it was full circle to have the Red Sox and Pedro there to speak to the classes that were reading his book and to learn about the mentoring program. You know, it was just a great reminder, I think, that day, the One Boston Day, of the importance of service, the importance of community. And I think the Condon, the Condon School students and staff made us proud, and they made me proud to see how they gave such a welcome and were so receptive of the work of Boston One. Another big celebration was, and it's a, this is a big announcement, was that the Boston Public Schools has been selected for the 2023 U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon School District Sustainability Award. This award acknowledges BPS's commitment to sustainable practices. Specifically, the award recognized for, you know, us for our leadership relative to the district in school facilities, health, and sustainable learning. BPS has been a leader in sustainability for a while now, and it's been recognized nationally and globally. And so this was just really kind of topping things off with the award. I want to really thank Dr. DePina and the entire facilities team because they are the ones that earned this award in their thoughtfulness, their intentionality, their practice as we work, you know, in facilities, both in our maintenance and upgrading of facilities in sustainable practice. So they made BPS proud, and we should all celebrate it because it is a very distinguished award. I would like to give a shout-out to administrative assistants and to our librarians. Last weekend was the National Librarian Day, and today is Administrative Professionals Day. And I just want to take the opportunity to acknowledge how integral our librarians are and our administrative assistants are to our school communities across BPS. You know, our librarians do so many things with our students and our families, really working on reading and helping students to find the perfect book or the perfect resource for their reports. And then certainly, our administrative assistants really help our school leadership to stay organized and efficient and able to really focus on our students and our families. They are all a valuable resource to our school communities at large, and their commitment, both throughout the pandemic and in these last two years, to really reach out, work with our families, work with our students, and support our staff is commendable, and I just want to say thank you for all of that work. Finally, this morning, I saw several of our School Committee members, Chair Robinson and Vice Chair O'Neal in particular, as well as so many of our electeds, as we attended the ceremony to rename the McKinley Schools as the Melvin H. King South End Academy. It was an honor to be a part of the renaming ceremony and to stand with Dr. King's wife, Mrs. Joyce King, Mayor Wu, Cindy Nielsen, all of our electeds, special guests that were there and friends at that renaming ceremony. You know, Mel King was, you know, for me, as I shared this morning, a true inspiration as a young teacher, as I met him for the first time when I was doing work in technology at the Fab Lab in the South End. And he made such an impression on me, and he really inspired me to want to make sure that I worked as hard as I could for our young people, for our community, and to give equity and education, you know, a reality. And so it was just an honor to be there among everyone, and Dr. King's wife did such a great job just capturing Mel's persistence in the work that was important and really asking our young people at, you know, the new Melvin H. King South End Academy to keep that persistence at heart and to work for the community in everything they do. One of the highlights, in addition to hearing Mrs. King speak, was to hear one of our very own students, Jalen Rodriguez, who I had the opportunity to meet on stage, who is a student at the now the Melvin H. King South End Academy, read a poem that Mel had written called "Struggle." And I was, my highlight of the day after that was to find out that Jalen would be here tonight so that he could share with the committee and the public a reading of that poem. So I'm going to ask Jalen if he could turn his camera on.
Good afternoon, everybody.
There we go.
A long, very long day, but you know, we're here. I'm glad to see all your beautiful faces. And yeah, this is, this is the poem that I rehearsed earlier today called "Struggle" by Mel King. And yeah. It's a struggle developing solidarity. It's a struggle being positive. It's a struggle making common unity. It's a struggle living. It's a struggle because it's slow. But if we struggle at developing solidarity, being positive, escaping reality, making common unity, we will grow because the struggle is to work for change. And change is for the basis of knowledge. I mean, sorry, guys, the basis of education. And education is the basis of knowledge. And knowledge is the basis for growth. And growth is the basis for being positive, and being positive is the basis for building solidarity. Building solidarity is a way to shape reality, and shaping reality is living. And living is loving, by Struggle, written by Mel King.
Awesome job, Jalen.
Thank you very much.
It's great.
So just thank you to Jalen and to Nina Nielsen for the event today. It really, really was such a special thing to participate in. You know, Mel's legacy will live on, certainly at, you know, our new academy and in BPS. And, you know, his focus and equity in education is a torch we all need to carry on now. So with that, Madam Chair, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to entertain questions.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. Please raise your hand. Dr. Alkins?
Thank you for the robust report, and, you know, thank you for reading the poem. It's only befitting being National Poetry Month as well to hear words of an activist and a strategist as well. So thank you for that. I actually only have really one question aimed around the summer programming opportunities. It's great that we have that many students that are already enrolled. What have you all been doing or even thinking about as far as, I would guess, for the older students and thinking about support for summer job opportunities and just ways in which, you know, our students can get money in their pockets during the summer, perhaps supporting some of these programs or doing other things?
Yeah. This is particularly important. So I think a couple of things. I think, one, the mayor's summer jobs, we're working very closely with the city, both to publicize and give access for registering for the jobs through our pick work and through our counseling work. But also, we're bringing it to the schools, you know. So we're trying to do sort of mobile, you know, So we're trying to do sort of mobile, you know, same thing, kind of showing up at events, showing up at the school in a way to be able to make that connection and get the registrations done right there. Additionally, we've put more of a push on the seventeen thousand seats that we have. Many of those are nonprofits that are running those. And so we're really trying to make the connection with the nonprofits with our students so that our students, our older students are helping to support our younger students. And so that's been a real intentional push, particularly this summer. So we had tried to get an update of the numbers, but the city, it's, you know, the city is still kind of processing that right now. I do think for May tenth, we can give you a concrete update of where we are with the jobs piece. But I can say at the high school level, it's the same kind of intentionality that we're doing at the younger grades where it's bringing the resource to the student and to the family. It's the same thing, bringing that to our younger people. You're welcome.
Mr. Carden Hernandez.
Thank you so much for the update. I have a few questions. I'll start with ones that were in the update, and then I will, maybe in the second round, ask you some things that weren't in. I guess I have a question about Acceleration Academies. And I had asked this to the previous superintendent, so I'm going to ask it to you, and maybe this is part of a long-term vision, or maybe it currently exists, and you can help unpack it for us. You know, the, like, name Acceleration Academy is super punchy, and we like that, like the idea is that it is accelerating in some area. But we've never, we've only talked about here enrollment and participation as like the goal. And I'm curious, have we done an analysis of how students who attend the Acceleration Academies have accelerated growth in any given domain? Sort of question one. If so, you know, what is that? What are those outcomes? Is it different for students who attend one versus two versus three? I guess we'll start there, and then we can keep going.
Sure. So I can't speak to last year. I can pull in somebody from academics that may be able to. I can say going forward, this is actually what we want to track, right? It is an expensive endeavor. You know, it's a lot of resource for a concentrated period of time in a concentrated group. I think the data of the transformation schools that we showed last week, or the last school committee, you know, clearly shows that there's growth. What we haven't done is the crosswalk of who's participated in the Acceleration Academies as we separate that out. As we get the MCAS data, that'll be another data point that we can kind of throw into that. And the last, you know, as we look at MAP going into June. But that crosswalk definitely needs to be done. I think there's a couple of things on the Acceleration Academy. I think one is, obviously, the idea is to accelerate in learning. But I think it's also around SEL, it's around engagement, it's around connection to school. I think that there's lots of different goals for the Acceleration Academy in there. We, the big question will be, do we continue to do them as we have? Or do we do a version of them where we work with schools? Like, for instance, there's some schools that wanted to do them that are not transformation schools. And so we really need to think about a process that would allow schools to be able to apply to do them because then we have to arrange transportation for the students, right? So it's, we went with kind of the straightforward transformation, recognizing these are the schools that tend to have clusters of students who could most benefit. However, I think one of the things we're actively talking about with leaders is what that could look like going forward. After we look at the results, we look at the value added, or which students was the value the greatest, and then make some decisions around, do we open it up more broadly? Or do we do something that's, you know, much more customized? That gives school leaders and schools the ability to sort of see what kids need and then be able to structure a week of learning around that.
I'm curious. I appreciate that answer because I've wondered this even in, particularly with Acceleration Academies, different than our summer programming? Because I have understood those to be much more camp-like. And we, you know, I'll say it again, like, the word acceleration, for me, means something really specific. And I wonder too, as a selling point, I think sort of two things. As a design point, I can imagine a universe where we are focused on the skills that we are looking to accelerate. We have the data around student performance and the growth zones, and you can't do it all in a week. But you could do a really concentrated program around literacy development or a concentrated program around pre-algebraic skills because we know students are struggling to access ninth grade algebra or MCAS prep because we know XMCS have become a barrier. I love the idea of like gardening projects and all this really cool stuff that for me feels like maybe right in the summer, but as a selling point for like the word acceleration. I'm not, I'm just not seeing it, and I, you know, I've said this before, like, sometimes I almost feel like we struggle to talk about rigor in this space. And so like, this is one of those moments that feels like really clear to like punchy name, punchy on rigor, but that would require us to have focus and then a selling point to families that indicates like, this is worth your time. It's more than just week-long babysitting, right? Like, we're gonna, we've been able to prove that a student attending, it's BPS calling, a student attending my after-school program. Students attending the Acceleration Academy, like, improve by X. And I don't know, I just, I would really, really like to see that type of focus here, given the investment.
Yeah, no, I think, I think, I think that when the Acceleration Academies were first rolled out years ago, they've always had a literacy focus in one and a math focus in the other, right? They were aligned in many ways stationed to the MCAS, right? And I would say that they were meant to deliver and reinforce particular skills in, you know, knowing that come MCAS, you would be applying those. I think that we are certainly on the academic side of that, following that model in terms of literacy and math, and then making sure that, you know, the connection is applied, but tangible skill building. At the high school level, you, you know, you can actually even, what we would do is kind of break them down by the particular strands, assess the student, what's the student missing, and then you'd kind of allow them to go into the particular area of strand that they needed the support. So I think we can get very kind of calculated and technical with it. There's also the piece that we need students to come to them.
Yeah.
So this is the, this is, I think, post-pandemic, right? The piece about making the learning connecting fun, enriching, but still learning. And that's, I think, the attempt has been, you know, last year and this year. I think we will look deeply at the data this year, right, to make some decisions about, from a design standpoint, what we feel we need to do to have them be more impactful. And that may be following the current design, or that might be veering from the current design. But I think we have to look at the data to make that determination.
Absolutely. It will be good, you know, I'm always too, like, sometimes it's about, we're so focused on big attendance numbers and not impact, and I would rather run a small program that nets results for the young folks who are showing up than running a huge expensive program that is sort of nets us neutral, or at least we don't have data to prove that it's worth, that there's a return on investment. So I will keep asking about this. I think it matters. I'm just saying this for the body as we think about the budget in the future to feel like we understand this investment because, you know, it's, as we saw from the Transformation Schools report, there's so much work to do there that like, you know, just like attendance as the goal for this type of programming doesn't get us to outcomes. Like, we have to see.
That's right. And I know, like, Dr. Eccleston, I know, can add on the curriculum side if you want more detail right now and how that's linked to the Transformation Schools.
Yeah. It would be good, maybe just in a future presentation, as we gear up for the next Acceleration Academy, like, either a sober conversation around, you know, we weren't tracking the data in this way, or we haven't seen the growth that we wanted to see in this way, so here are the substantive changes that we're making. But as we move into it, that it's like a data-driven conversation around outcomes, around, more specifically, acceleration in a particular area. All right, I'm super out of time.
Dr. Alkins.
Yeah, so sort of piggybacking off that, I mean, there would be a lot of things to, that you would need to put in place in thinking about alignment with where teachers are in their curriculum. But it actually begs the question of what data is recorded already? Through these, I mean, even beyond the scope of attendance, but are you tracking engagement within, like, for the student after? Or are you doing any type of sentiment analysis after that, just to even see how students have transformed in terms of their feelings about a particular subject matter? You know, and I think, you know, that speaks to the notion of the benefit of like project-based learning and experiential learning, where it's like, I can now see sort of a relevant context where this, you know, me learning about linear equations is actually related to, hey, if I want to understand how the price of something jumps, like, I can track that, right? So I'm just wondering what is recorded beyond the scope of just sort of the enrollment numbers?
So I think we use MAP, right, as the general assessment tool, and we look at MAP growth, right? That is kind of the consistent, you know, within that week. So, I mean, it is, you know, different than other kinds of initiatives of the summer. It's a week. So it's, you know, when I'm thinking like the calculus project is like a great example where you can actually see by exposing students, you know, to higher-level math concepts through project-based, they come to be far more comfortable in math. They see themselves in math, right? But that is done over extended period of time. I think here we need to, you know, currently we're using MAP growth as kind of the measure. We will obviously do kind of postmortem with MCAS. But, you know, it may be that we need to be thinking about different kinds of baseline going in and coming out than we've previously used.
Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent, for the report. Quiero empezar felicitando a la señora María Novas por su nombramiento.
We're not hearing.
Gracias, Rafa. Estoy muy emocionada por trabajar contigo de nuevo. I want to say in English, maybe I'm trying, okay? Okay, my interpreter no, no aparece. I want to say, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Superintendent, for your report. I want to say, María Nova, congratulations for your new position in BPS. I think I know María Nova working very close to the parents. Yeah, que sé que María Nova ha trabajado muy de cerca con los padres.
So I know that María Nova has worked very hard with parents.
Y nos llena como, nos da una luz de saber que va a estar trabajando en la posición de equidad y esto nos llena de mucha esperanza.
And it is very, it gives us a light, and it gives us a lot of hope and knowing that she is going to be working in the equity side.
También quiero felicitar a Jalen Rodriguez. Es un trabajo magnífico con decir el programa. Muchísimas gracias.
I want to also congratulate Jalen Rodriguez for the poem. He did an excellent job.
Okay, entonces mi pregunta es sobre el departamento multicultural y multilingüe. Yo sé que han estado haciendo algunos, han estado dando algunos pasos. Agradezco mucho por esto, pero quisiera ver si tienen alguna actualización porque sé que estamos necesitando personal que continúe, que pueda realizar la dirección de hacer métricas más sostenibles. Entonces, me gustaría saber qué actualización nos tienen sobre esto, sobre la contratación del nuevo personal.
So my question, I have a question, and it's regarding the multilingual program. We know that we have some staff, some positions that we need to fill, and I would like to know, what are we doing, what step are we regarding these, the new hires that we need to have to complete the program?
The program del departamento, no específicamente los programas, sino el departamento multicultural y multilingüe que sé que ahora mismo necesita personal. ¿En qué fase y qué están haciendo para la contratación de este personal?
So to be specific about the program, to be specific about the program of the multilingual program, and we want to know, where are we with hiring for these programs?
Through your, are you asking about the summer programming or just general multilingual program?
My question is about the multicultural and multilingual department. Department, because is the multicultural and multilingual department need personal, right?
Yes.
I need you to know what or day you provide for. I need you to know what happened in the department right now.
Okay, so we've done a national search for the director. We are now getting the names. They've done the screening, and we're getting the names to kind of go to the step of interview for that position. That's the big position. Dr. Chen, can you provide any update on some of the other positions that I know you have posted for OMME?
Sorry, sure. Thank you for the question and always your advocacy for the Department of Multilingual Learners. We, as we discussed during the budget process, we have added a number of positions, and those postings should be going up soon. We are adding multilingual coaches as well as directors for bilingual programming and multilingual learners with disabilities. So we are in the process of getting those postings up and getting interview committees together so that we can hire as quickly as possible.
Gracias por la respuesta. De seguimiento, yo sé que ahí están creando una comisión para las audiencias de contratación. ¿Tienen alguna actualización que la comunidad pueda saber qué está pasando? Qué pasos se están dando?
So I know that we're getting together some forums for people to know, and I would like to know if we're going to have this open to the public for people to know what's going on.
I missed the first part going on about which thing?
Regarding the hiring audiences.
Well, the hiring. So Linda, Dr. Chen, I think that's something that's probably been announced through OMME.
So I've shared the positions with the teams and we do have, so for the chief position, there is a member of the EL Task Force that is involved in the hiring process. And we have our usual hiring processes within BPS for other positions as we normally do. If there's a request to provide the EL Task Force with updates on where we are with staffing, I think that's something we certainly could do. But I'm not sure maybe of the question around, I think of just how we want to publicize staffing because we don't. I think, so I want to make sure we are able to follow up on the request. Is it to update the EL Task Force? Because that is a public space. We can certainly update in terms of positions there.
Okay, está bien. Para que podamos entender la pregunta específicamente, Rondo.
Sí.
I got the English. Yo me voy para el inglés. Para que puedas entender específicamente la pregunta, es sobre una comisión para los GORI, para las audiencias de contratación de los finalistas. Es la pregunta específica. ¿Cómo, qué puedes decirlo? ¿Cuál es la actualización sobre esta comisión? Es la pregunta específica, cómo, qué puedes decirlo, cuál es la actualización sobre este este esta comisión?
So I want, uh, the specific question is how? We're gonna do the, for the finalist, the. How we're gonna hear the information about the finalists?
Okay. So Linda, I think, uh, Dr. Chen, I think that what, um, Ms. Palanco Garcia is asking is what is the community involvement? In the process for selecting the chief?
Sure, and I think that perhaps Monica Hogan can also share because it it's the same process for all of the chief positions. There is um a process where there is a EL task force member. Who has been identified and is part of the process. So we have training as the interviewers with the consulting company. For this, the semi, like the first round of interviews will be with the EL task force member. And then there's another committee. After the first round of interviewers give feedback. Those candidates advance to the second and final round. So, um, I think Monica can be more specific, but there is a applicant's, um, submit an application. Then they also submit a video and they also get a phone interview and a screen. From um the search consultant. And then it's the first round of interviews with the EL task force member. And then there's a final round. And then, um, we will make a decision. And then that will be shared publicly, um, generally similar to an announcement that the superintendent made. Regarding Dr. Novas this evening, there would be um a communications cascade to inform. Uh, our collaborators and stakeholders as well as the public.
Okay. Um, thank you. They have they line about that? What is the deadline?
It's the deadline?
Yes, the, um, right now, we are getting dates on the calendar. Um, for, I believe they're already scheduled and that we have holds in the next couple of weeks to do the interviews.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you.
Art, um, also, um, I I just wanted to say that. We, we were working with the firm to make sure that the pool was robust and big. Um, and so that meant their suggestion was to leave it up longer to be able to get a bigger pool. So that's why it's a little bit later than we thought, but the idea is to get the most talent in the pool.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You are a mute. So sorry. Yes, Mr. Cardad Hernandez, sorry.
I was trying to wait and see if there was.
Yeah, I asked, but nobody heard me ask it.
I figured, I, um. My second question is just around the summer programming and the inclusive opportunities. I'm curious, you know, right now, and I believe in you Superintendent Skipper, because I think you're gonna help change this. Right now, we talk about our students in a binary, you were either without a disability or with a disability. And so every conversation we have about special education is just sort of like in this totality. It's a big piece of our system to talk about as a sort of monolith. And so I am curious, and I think this, as we, if we're really committed to special education reform. I think this will actually be part and we can set up some of that here. Um, and really thinking differently about how we talk about students with disabilities. And I think some of this is historical here, it's why we've been able to otherize the community for so long. And we have schools that, uh, in many ways have refused to work with young folks with complex needs. And so I'm just actually curious as we talk about summer programming, and this may be for the next. Uh, school committee meeting, because I suspect you're gonna give us another summer programming update. So in future summer programming updates, when we're talking about additional supports and services for students with disabilities. Is there a way actually to allow that conversation to become a little bit more complex? And what I'm thinking about is if we're building new opportunities. How many of those opportunities are for students outside of a 12-month IEP? How many of those opportunities are for students who require one-to-one support? How many of those new ser- supports are for students who, uh, have emotional disabilities? Behavioral health challenges, uh, experience high levels of dysregulation, which requires a different skillset for a provider and a site to have. Versus how many of those are students with complex neurological profiles? Or more traditional learning disabilities like dyslexia or something, right? Because I I I'm happy we're opening up, but it's like, we're opening it up for who? And a parent of a young person with a disability isn't experiencing the their child. The way that we have often talked about their child is like disabled or not disabled, like they're thinking about the the sort of specific profile. Within the community that their child has. And so hopefully, I don't know if it's possible, but hopefully we can think about that, because it will also really think about the sort of dynamic programming that's happening.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely, and I think, you know, obviously with inclusion, um, you know, the same, the same concept. Holds true, right, which is that you're designing the environment for the student, for all, for the student. Not, you know, not, uh, the specific disability strand. And so, um, so that, that is, I think, you know, the goal is, you know, this is our entree into, as we did with sort of our MLE students last year. This is the entree into doing that now with the providers for the summer. Um, so in terms of the granularity of the data, I think it's important to ask the question. Because then that for us, you know, says, this is something that we're gonna want to make sure we track and measure, right? So we see this as a baseline year. And then moving forward, where do we add additional resources to be able to expand those opportunities? The other thing will be to be creative in partnership. Um, with particular, you know, like we just had, you know, celebrating autism, you know, um, a week and and day. And so we just had that event and at it were all the partners who are geared to supporting students with autism. The power of connecting with them, connecting with, say, Special Olympics. We could actually design some opportunities, right? So, um, we see this as just sort of the baseline year to kind of, um, see what we're able to do. Um, with the partners we have, and then I think after that, it's gonna be intentional recruiting and building out a menu. But collecting that data will be an important first step.
Perfect, and if there's any programs that are being designed for targeted communities. Because of sort of specialized supports or even the belief that young folks with similar profiles deserve affinity spaces. The same way we think about racial affinity spaces or affinity spaces for LGBT people. That like there is real power in, um, sort of creating community, uh, for young folks who have been otherized. So like both things can be true, right, like that sort of community-driven space, but also that support given space around a sort of more complex need. Um, so hopefully maybe in the, I I I respect that there's sort of work to do. And so like this is a step in that direction, and then at the same time as we're thinking about it, if there are programs that are currently being developed that are really focused. It would be really amazing to just know about that and how.
No, a hundred percent, and I think for the, you know, for our 12-month students with ESY. I think the other thing that parents have asked about is like, how can we marry programming for them? So the the day, which is relatively shorter, could be a fuller day, but with different kinds of activities.
Yeah.
So I think it's looking at all the different profiles, but also the partners to see where capacity exists. Where do we need to add capacity? Where can we recruit and design capacity?
Beautiful.
The excitement is that there's a will, there's a need, there's a recognition of that, there's a will and there are resources. So I I think this is gonna be an area that we're gonna be able to make some really good progress.
How exciting.
No.
Any more questions?
Superintendent, I just have one, oops. Mr. Tran, did you have a question?
Oh, I know, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, I just have one question in terms of collecting data. I was thinking about the fact that if you have students that attend the two acceleration academies. And then attend the five-week summer program, we've added an additional 35 days to their school year. And I was wondering if we are collecting any data about who is actually taking advantage of those 35 days? In terms of where they go to school, what their issues are, and then can we specifically look at their data in terms of their outcomes?
Yes.
See if what impact, if you know, this has had on them, because that's a significant addition to the school year.
That's right, and I think, uh, you know, that goes back to Dr. Alkin's point too, right? Like, I I think being able to study groups of students that participate in the back-to-backs or who participate in the back-to-back plus the summer. Um, much like we know that students that complete, right, and it actually attend the four weeks of summer. That those students have stronger outcome when it comes to the beginning of school and starting school. You know, we can make some projection there, right? It's not gonna be fail-proof, but we can make some trend projection to say to parents, like, if you can help with making sure that students are attending. You know, in this way, you know, we're pretty confident that that's gonna mean this for the student. Um, so I think that's the language that we have to start to kind of develop, and that's the data that we have to look at. Um, I did want to let Dr. Alkins know, um, the summer team did clarify that there is a student survey. That does get at a bit of what you're asking, um, and so we're happy to share that and we can include that like in the next update, um, what that shows.
Okay. Mr. Cardad Hernandez.
As I eat, I promise this is my last, um, question, but it just didn't come up and I wasn't at the last meeting. There were two things that happened during the last meeting, um, that I'm just worried if you had any sort of new updates for us on. One is just the sort of state of play at the Henderson. Um, I watched and you gave a, an update for us, but I'm just giving the importance. And actually a continuation of my earlier question, just sort of what's happening, uh, and any progress that we, that you can report for us. There, and then I'll ask a second question around chronic absenteeism.
Sure, so, um, on the Henderson, I'll, I'll tag in Dr. Eccleston, because I know that he just actually had a parent meeting last night. Um, but the short answer is yes, um, we have a plan, the plan's being communicated to the school community. There's been additional resources put into the school, um, and I know that Dr. Eccleston was communicating all of this to the parents, uh, last night, so, Drew?
Yeah, I had the chance a few days ago, maybe it was Monday, I'm not sure, it's all a little blurry, but sometime this week. Um, to meet and I had a very collaborative and thoughtful discussion, uh, with a group of families from the Henderson. Um, for background, when I was previously in the district, um, as a regional school superintendent. I helped write the innovation plan to move the school from a K-five school to a K-12, so it's a very important school community, um, to me personally. And had a a chance to sort of hear from them specifically about their, uh, some of the challenges that they've been experiencing. In some of their sort of requests and asks, uh, to help support and accelerate improvement. Um, some things that we've committed to, um, in terms of support from the district. Is providing clarity and high-quality communication around, uh, long-range leadership for the school. Ensuring, uh, sort of a more robust before and after-school program, um, at the school to support families and children. And to ensure that things like the arts are integrated into that before and after-school program. Um, the family's brought up that, um, uh, because there's been some changes in in faculty and staffing at the school. That there really could be dedicated time toward professional development around the principles of inclusion. As well as what inclusion, inclusion, inclusionary practices look like in the context, um, of of the of the Henderson. Um, there was just some concerns about the the postings, was able to clarify some of those things and some commitments of specific postings. They wanted me to continue to look into, um, and I have made a personal commitment. Um, and obviously on behalf of the district, that there would be no substantially separate programming at the Henderson. It's not, uh, consistent with the values of the school, and so I think there was some confusion, uh, about that, but made that that point very clear. And they're looking for improved communication, um, to families around, uh, things regularly about, uh, improvement. In the the ways that, um, family members can contribute and support. I'm finally committing to ensure that there's an inclusion planning team that represents the diversity of the community. Um, and that, um, decisions that are are really important, either policy decisions, um, and or practice decisions. Uh, are being, um, considered by a diverse range of people at the school. And to purely center, um, their identity as an inclusive community and evaluating whether or not those decisions are the right ones. So I think it was a pretty productive, um, conversation and look forward to following through on these things. Um, and have committed to meeting with the families again in about two weeks. Um, and have followed up on a few of the things already, um, in collaboration with the superintendent and others.
Thank you so much for the update. And I'm gonna save my question about chronic absenteeism for a later date.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Sullivan, will you please call the wall?
Thank you, Dr. Alkins.
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopez, Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil, Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you, the report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students and other concerned parties. To make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 18 speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and I remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. New tonight, the time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. All speakers will have three minutes. We will pause the timer when the testimony is interpreted into English. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks. Or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name you used to sign up for public comment. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with Tang Fai Sun, followed by Ruby Reyes, Blanca Bonilla. Hannah Ken, Carmen Acosta, Michael Heisman, Tracy Curtin. And Oneida Casado. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Tang Fai Sun?
Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Um. A Tang Fai Sun, parent of pre-K student at Western YLC. My daughter is four years old and she has selective mutism, Roxbury Crossing. Good evening, the Boston School Committee. As a parent of multilingual learner with disability, I'm here tonight to share my horrific experience. Similar to those lived by families from the former Mission Hills School. Before I continue with my testimony, I want to emphasize that I am commenting on BPS as a district. In fact, I'm extremely grateful for the individual educators who care deeply about my child. In fact, I'm extremely grateful for the individual educators who care deeply about my child. So how does my family's experience mirror the systemic dysfunction at the Mission Hill? Number one, culture of nonresponsiveness and lack of accountability. Number two, failures to provide timely and adequate special education services. Number three, failures to ensure physical and emotional safety. Since June of last year, I've gone to six IEP meetings to advocate for additional support to meet my daughter's individual life needs. However, BPS continually deny parents suggested evidence-based accommodations and recommendations from independent education evaluation. The coes denied the suggested accommodations based on the rationale that other students on a caseload with the same disability did not receive those accommodations. The newly hired school psychologist violated state and federal laws by not showing up to two IEP meetings. The school leader and regional superintendent did not respond to emails. When I met the school principal in person, she declared in a condescending tone, "Listen, I've been doing this for thirty years. I'm gonna do it my way." The AD of Special Education said it was not her job to look at data. Out of three annual IEP goals, none of them will be fully matched. My child used oral language zero percent of the time in the general classroom and had multiple regressions. Such outcomes could have been prevented with a comprehensive MTSS framework and database decision-making. The interim Assistant Superintendent of Special Education dismissed my concerns as misunderstandings. The school did not have sufficient resources to monitor student safety because I reported multiple incidents of my child being physically pushed in the bathroom outside the school building and on the school bus. In addition, the school bus monitor told students to shut up on the school bus and did not help my child put on the seatbelt that is critical for our safety. Chair, despite the superintendent's unwavering commitment to support multilingual learners with disabilities and their families, BPS deprived my daughter's rights to free, appropriate public education, hampered her educational achievement, and failed to ensure her safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruby Reyes, and I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. Beja is a member of the Bill BPS Green New Deal Stakeholders Coalition, and we continue to demand a moratorium on school closures and major facility decisions until BPS creates a comprehensive facilities plan that includes a completed equity analysis of the impact on Black and Latino communities, students with disabilities, English learners, and low-income families. We request missing information including swing space, financial reports, estimated costs for rebuilds, relocation, maintenance, program expansions, and educational plans for proposed school reconfigurations. The current plan, regardless of name or mayor, does not include any of these specifics. Clearly, decisions are being made behind closed doors and with a community engagement process that is performative, rather than authentically incorporating the feedback of BPS families or school communities. Decisions continue to be made without an analysis of who is harmed, community input, or even common sense thinking about the impact or timeline of repairs and closures. All of this has created broader instability and mistrust so that families and school communities don't know if they are going to be closing. School committee members feel like they can casually mention closing schools haphazardly. The Shaw community does not want a merger. Some of our families have been vocal about how bad their community engagement process has been. BPS families shouldn't have to gamble. This process is inequitable and creating more inequity. In the words of Martin Luther King Jr., Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "Nothing in the world is more dangerous than sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity." You cannot claim that you don't know, because families have come to school committee to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Blanca Bonilla.
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is, good evening, my name is Blanca Bonilla. And thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I went through the Boston Public Schools, graduated from the system, and then I became part of the founding staff of the Boston Arts Academy. And today I am speaking to you guys because I'm proposing that the Boston Arts Academy Theater will be named after Linda Nathan and Carmen Torres. Why? Because they are the founders of BAA. They both developed an arts and an academic curriculum that they still using today that gave the students the tools to be successful in the arts and the academics. These two women from different backgrounds came together with one goal, to be vital instruments to the youth of Boston. They helped thousands of students to dream big and to be responsible citizens in their communities. Their dedication, their commitment, and guidance need to be recognized. So I feel very, very strongly about this. I saw how they, they pick a group of people that were diverse, that represented the community, and that they built, both of them, built this school. And that's why we have such a successful school. And our students, the students right now, need to recognize that these two women came together to do something spectacular and to build BAA. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hannah Ken.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Keen, and I have spent many years in Boston, but I don't currently live in Boston right now. I actually live in Brooklyn, New York. And what I have to offer is a bit of an expansion of what the last person spoke about. I am here to advocate for the theater at Boston Arts Academy being named in honor of Dr. Linda Nathan and Carmen Torres. But my, my, what I would like to offer is the perspective that I have now as a school leader in New York City, in Queens, New York. I had the privilege of working with Linda in a few different capacities. I spent time at Boston Arts Academy at different points in my career. And six years ago, I started a charter high school in New York City. And much of what I did was study what was happening at Boston Arts Academy when I was envisioning a school design that challenged the status quo, that put arts at the center in a way to provoke change, you know, this idea of artivism. And so the design of my school is in part inspired by and also building off of some of the work at Boston Arts Academy, specifically something called the Senior Grant Project. The Senior Grant Project at Boston Arts Academy shifted a little bit to my school. We call it our Senior Capstone Project. It has allowed us to empower our students to envision change and not just envision it, but actually experience it, experience it. And because of that, we were selected to be one of fifty high schools in the state of New York to offer a seal of civics on our diplomas. I've had the honor of presenting about this senior grant concept, students learning how to write grant proposals, forming committees, and really experiencing civics in action so that students graduate actually knowing how to analyze through cause and identify a tactic and implement it. I mean, that's what we need in society. That's what's going to change society, is our high school students graduating having some experience with that. And so I think that the theater should be named after them in part because of the impact beyond Boston, quite frankly, that, that both these women had who designed this in the first place, you know, with their founding team. And, and I really think that's tremendous. I mean, there are now schools all over the country that are trying to implement this idea. And that's a powerful thing. That's rare. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carmen Acosta, followed by Michael Heishman, Tracy Curtin, and Oneida Casado. Carmen?
Oh, my goodness. Hello?
Hi, Carmen.
Hi, can you hear me? I can't, oh, I can't even, I'm lost now.
Yep, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
You don't have to see me then. Okay, I'm done testimony on a transportation issue that I have. I have a granddaughter that is attended, that was accepted to the K-10 school. I live in West Roxbury, and my issue is the transportation not coming on time in the morning. And sometimes they show up late, and I cannot track the bus when it comes and get to the school. So she had not attended a school. And that's the issue because I have to work, my, my daughter has to work, and we can't get to work on time. So that's the issue that we have with the transportation. Hello?
Yes. Hi, Carmen, thank you.
So I don't know, how can we? Excuse me?
The superintendent and her team are on, and I have a feeling she's going to offer to have someone follow up with you? Yes, let somebody follow up right away.
Okay, okay, no problem. Thank you.
We have your information. Thank you. Someone will follow up from transportation.
Okay, thank you very.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Heishman.
Mike Heishman, Beja, Dorchester. Not part of my prepared remarks, but my daughter went to the Boston Arts Academy. It was a great school, and I endorsed the proposal. If you're not outraged, why not? Every member of Mayor Wu's appointed school board has been very generous, supportive, and appreciative of our new superintendent. No member over many years has been more supportive and appreciative of past and present superintendents than Mr. O'Neil. At your last meeting, Mr. O'Neil and Ms. Robbins spoke at great length about the damaging mistake made over exam school admissions. I heard dismay, frustration, hurt, anger, and maybe some outrage. I understand it can relate to the pain and damage done and the outrage that many families are now experiencing. Many years ago, my daughter was accepted into the exam schools. We were very happy. After acceptance, if she had received a "whoops, we're sorry" message, we would have been hurt and outraged. A mistake was made. However, I see no problem with the policies and procedures that were in place. Mistakes happen. Of course, the superintendent, because of her position, is responsible. However, in this case, I believe that Ms. Skipper performed correctly and is not to be blamed. Sometimes Mayor Wu's appointed board is upset and angry. If you were an elected school committee, you would express more anger and outrage. Why are you often so silent? You and the superintendent have been complicit in the retreat from BPS becoming an anti-racist institution. Before taking office, Ms. Skipper, on August the 24th, had received a letter from fifteen high-ranking retired BPS educators of color protesting against the targeting harassment firing of anti-racist Black and Brown Central Office leaders. The public did not know about this until three whistleblowers, including myself, notified the community in October during public testimony. You have allowed Ms. Skipper to be in charge of the investigation against herself. It is now April 26th. Nothing new was reported again today. You allow this cover-up to continue. Donald Trump would love to have this deal. The comparison of Dr. Casellius's organizational chart with Ms. Skipper demonstrates a retreat from equity. When Dr. Casellius was our leader, the Community Equity Roundtable had held thirty-nine meetings. Since Ms. Skipper took office, there has only been four meetings, another example of a retreat from equity. Mayor Wu's appointed school board should be outraged. An elected school committee would be outraged. Instead, you choose to be silent and complicit racism. I acknowledge you didn't have time to put it in my prepared testimony that Ms. Skipper did emphasize equity at today's meeting, and I'm very pleased on the emphasis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Curtin.
Good evening, members of the Boston School Committee. My name is Tracy Curtin, and I'm one of the current fourth-grade teachers at the P.A. Shaw Elementary School. We are back before you tonight to share our perspective on the proposal to merge our school community with Taylor. I attended the April 4th community meeting in which updates were given about months of work the design team had done in service of the merger. At this meeting, we discussed the core values the team had written for the new merged school, which discussed the core values the team had written, which mirror the values that the Shaw embodies. My first concern, which is shared by the members of the design team, is that we're going to be voting on this merger with a plan that consists of only four values. There was not one concrete benefit that was presented to our school communities at this meeting which would lead us to support a merger right now. While the lack of a plan is very concerning to members of the Shaw community, my most serious concern with the proposal to merge the Shaw and the Taylor is a concern about the racial equity of this merger. Both the Shaw and the Taylor consist of predominantly Black students and families. We've heard time and again that the Boston Public School District aims to be an anti-racist district that makes plans with racial equity at the forefront. We are concerned that issues of racial inequity are in this merger, namely the lack of authentic family engagement and the lack of any real investment in the facilities and the resources for this new merged school have yet to be addressed. Other school communities previously slated to merge have had their mergers stopped or postponed due to similar concerns: a lack of sufficient facilities, a lack of authentic listening to family voice, a lack of a clear plan for the merger, and more. It's concerning to us that the Shaw-Taylor merger, the merger that's going to affect the most Black and Brown families, is the only school merger in the city of Boston that is forging forward at full speed, regardless of what family voices are saying loud and clear. Further, the Shaw-Taylor merger is currently the only school merger that's being voted on with no promise of facility upgrades, renovations, or a new building. Why is it that our two school communities, the Shaw and the Taylor, are again being asked to do more with less? The ceiling in my classroom has been leaking when it rains for three years now. This has yet to be fixed. Telling our school communities about a vague idea to upgrade our facilities should not be enough to approve this merger when both the Shaw and the Taylor are located in buildings that are woefully inadequate. Before we forge ahead and approve of this merger, we must honestly look at the plan and ask, "Does this merger truly fulfill any promise of racial equity for our Black and Brown students in Matapan and Dorchester? Is this really what our quality guarantee looks like?" If we are honestly asking ourselves these questions, it seems clear that we are not ready to approve this merger yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Oneida is not signed into the meeting, so I'll invite our Spanish interpreter to support our next speaker, Janet Munoz. And again, each speaker will have three minutes, and we will pause the timer while the testimony is being interpreted into English.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Pida Janet Muñoz y soy madre de tres niñas que van a las escuelas públicas de Boston.
So my name is Mrs. Muñoz, Janet Muñoz, and I am the mother of three students that attend Boston Public Schools.
Y gracias al comité por darnos más tiempo a las personas que así como yo no en inglés es un es un idioma, segundo idioma para nosotros. Entonces muchas gracias por eso.
And thanks to the meeting to give us, to the people that only speak one language or that only speak another language to give us more time, like me that I only speak Spanish.
Primero que todo, quiero hablar sobre la importancia que tiene el bilingüismo en las escuelas públicas.
First and foremost, I would like to speak of the importance of bilingualism in public schools.
Nuestras escuelas tienen una gran riqueza cultural y lingüística, ya que somos uno de los distritos con más diversos de Massachusetts y creo que es más o menos unos veintiún idiomas que se están hablando, así que es es un gran honor para nosotros hacer parte de este distrito.
So, first and foremost, I would like to say that we have the privilege of being one of the most diverse school districts in the state. We, I think that we have over twenty-one languages that are spoken on our district and that is a great privilege.
Porque esto prepara a nuestros estudiantes a competir en una sociedad que cada día está más globalizada.
Because this helps our students to get prepared to work in a more globalized world that we are seeing right now.
Y así conseguir mejores oportunidades y trabajos profesionales.
And like that they will get better opportunities and will have better jobs.
Okay. Los estudiantes, inmigrantes y aprendices del idioma inglés también, también por ende son los más vulnerables para el bullying.
Also, students that are that are immigrants and students that are learning the English language or English language learners are more vulnerable to bullying.
Y es aquí donde se hace una brecha que hace que nuestros estudiantes se desmotiven y se sientan aislados en su propia escuela.
And that is when there, a gap is opened and that is when the students feel unmotivated and do not want to go to school.
Personalmente, en el caso de mi sobrina cuando llegó a este país, sus compañeras siempre la trataron de boba y de bruta.
Personally, when my niece came to this country, her her peers used to treat her like if she was dumb or that she did not, she was dumb.
Simplemente por el hecho de no entender inglés.
Simply because she could not understand English.
Esto la llevó a una gran depresión y a no querer volver a la escuela.
And that took her to a very deep depression and she did not want to go back to school.
Gracias a afortunadamente ella contaba con una familia con el apoyo de nosotras. Lamentablemente, no fue lo mismo de la escuela.
Fortunately, she had the support of the family. Unfortunately, she did not have the same thing from school.
Gracias a esa resiliencia. Gracias a esa resiliencia, ella ahora es una gran maestra.
Thanks for that resiliency.
Perdón.
And thanks for that resiliency. She is now a great teacher.
Y ella lucha para que eso no le pase a otros niños y que los niños se sientan parte de esa escuela.
Twenty seconds.
Thanks for that. She fights for other children and she also fights for that that will not happen to other children.
Por eso, de ahí la importancia de trabajar juntos estudiantes, padres, la comunidad, las escuelas, para que todos los niños tengan equidad y así ofrecer unos mejores servicios y apoyo que se necesita para salir adelante. El objetivo de, yo creo que todas las familias que estamos educando es nuestros hijos.
So that is the importance that school, community, parents, students, schools all work together because that's the way that we could get true equity and I think that that is what all of us are pushing for.
Gracias, Ms. Muñoz.
Gracias, her face.
Our next speaker is Kim Emery, followed by Deb Shea, Anna Lanas, Elizabeth Ferens, Rachel Young, and Lauren Peter. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Kim Emery? Kim, can you please accept the prompt?
Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. Thanks so much. My name is Kim. I'm a resident of Boston and I have a junior in BPS and I'm a mom of a graduate as well. I'm motivated tonight to give public testimony at school committee regarding family engagement after citywide parent council meeting last night. Its well-organized and hard-working family engagement subcommittee explained the process they've been experiencing in collecting data from Central Office to help inform their efforts to highlight strengths and gaps in authentic partnerships throughout the district and that our schools have with families and students. Some concerning stats on family engagement were shared, presumably from the Office of Family Engagement. Only eleven percent of our schools are in the fully functioning category, which was just thirteen of our one hundred and eighteen schools. Only twenty percent are qualifying in the not reporting category, which is twenty-two of our one hundred and eighteen schools. Seventy percent qualify in the reporting category, which means that they're only partially meeting expectations. Fifty percent of schools are submitting a family school compact, which is part of the Title I requirements. And fifty percent of schools are submitting a family engagement plan. What was perhaps the most astonishing part of the info from Central Office was that no data was presented for schools meeting the expectation of submitting a quality school improvement plan, which is the Title I school-wide project plan that also must meet the Title I requirements. Since the quality school plan was not included, it also left out reference to the Wellness Action Plan, so no data was available for those. The process of developing a quality school improvement plan rests with a diverse group of collaborators, teachers, staff, families, students, and admin. Ultimately, the SSC reviews and votes on whether to approve it or not. This is explained through the SSC manual, the superintendent circular, and the school-based management shared decision-making model that BPS touts, but sadly does not comply with. The CPC Family Engagement Report cited a lack of assistance from BPS when asking for resources. BPS had no other guidelines to measure or monitor engagement, they were told. They've asked for indicators, but they haven't gotten any, so they had to make their own. But actually, BPS does have other indicators of family engagement. Just see the School Quality Framework on the BPS website, which lists family and student engagement indicators and school leader effective communication and engagement with families. The framework results in schools IDed as Tier One to Tier Four, and these are important designations used by prospective families in school selection. What are we to make of reference to only some collaborative efforts? There's no reference to the Quality School Improvement Plan, the Wellness Action Plan, Student Engagement Plan for middle and high school students. These all are required participation with collaborators for shared decision-making. Why do the requests for elections from elected parent and guardian district-wide representatives continue to be rebuffed?
Ms. Emery, could you please wrap up? Our next speaker is Deb Shea.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thanks. My name is Deb Shea. I live in Dorchester. I'm the parent of a third-grade student at the P A Shaw School, where she's been since 2018, when she entered as a K-1 student. And I am a member of the Shaw Parent Council and the School Site Council, and I'm also a member of the design team for the Shaw-Taylor merger. I appreciate the time and effort that went into the proposal that you'll be hearing tonight. But the proposal, in my mind, is not a plan. We have consistently come to meetings with specific questions about how things are going to work, how the school, the combined school will look and feel. And we are always told that those decisions will be made later. And that we will get details about the budget. We will get details about number of classrooms and programming, extracurriculars, later. It's always later. And that is a very uncomfortable position to be in as a parent. The uncertainty and the disruption that it's already caused in our school communities is going to have ripple effects. And honestly, this proposal doesn't feel like a plan. It feels like a promise and the Shaw community has experienced so many broken promises already that it's hard to expect anything else than that. I part of the issue for this, you know, part of the reason for this merger is that the schools are under-enrolled. My question to you is why have these schools not been serving the students that are there to this point? Why are the investments not being made for the students who are currently at the schools to make these schools destination? Schools that people want to be at? And why is this merger being presented as a cure-all that will magically fix the issues that these schools are experiencing? Thank you. That is, I would just like for you to really deeply consider whether the merger is the only solution and whether it would be better to invest in these school communities and really build them up and support them in what they're trying to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anna Lanas.
Hi, good afternoon. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Buenas tardes a todos mis compañeras y compañeras latinas. My name is Anna Lanas. I am a school-based social worker at the Everett Elementary. I am an immigrant from Quito, Ecuador. I am a Spanish speaker and I am here only because of my parents' valor and unwavering faith in the American dream, which I believed in until this year. So overnight, we got new administration. I thought that the new administration was going to be phenomenal because she too is a person of color. I looked more forward to Mondays more than I did Fridays because of how much I love my kids, because of how much I give to my kids and because of how much they give to me. They are literally my identity. They are who I identify with and I love what I do. So we were faced, and we still are faced, by severe staffing shortage and I was asked to step out of my role into a substitute role. I spoke up. I said, I can't do this to these kids. They've known way too much instability throughout their lives. They can't afford to not have a mental health clinician, which is the first, I am the first social worker in our school and I am the first perpetual social worker for two years, so they haven't had a consistent mental health provider. My principal did not like me speaking up and advocating for myself. She decided that I wasn't a good fit for the school and not invite me back. And while I am confident that I served and reached my purpose in this role with these amazing, tiny, bright, and beautiful humans, I am not so confident that they will be able to fathom the reason for my unwarranted departure, a toxic and traumatic cycle that they know far too well. However, what is most detrimental is the fact that some school leaders don't grasp the weight of perpetuating an abandonment cycle. And what is even more worrisome is that they don't even want to. I pray for and dream of a systemic revolution where the well-being of these tiny humans is at the forefront of every decision and that decisions aren't made on a class basis or on a personal basis, but on the basis of what is best for these children, what is best for not only their academic well-being, but their social and emotional well-being. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Ferens, followed by Rachel Young, Lauren Peter, Jessica Manna, Pamela Richardson, and Bonnie McBride. Elizabeth?
Good evening, School Committee. My name is Elizabeth Ferens. I'm a Roseland Dell resident, parent to a second grader at the Sumner Elementary School. You'll see us at Sumner Bash with our beautiful playground behind me. And I'm also the co-chair of our Sumner Family Council. I'm the first of five Sumner community members testifying tonight. Ever since the merger between the Filbrick and Sumner was proposed at a meeting on May 26, 2022, we have been asking for authentic community engagement. However, our experience with BPS has been of many months of having our emails and calls ignored, getting shuffled around between different low-level staffers who don't understand our merger and a lack of transparency. I also want to amplify the testimony of the Shaw community and their requests for authentic engagement and reconsideration of the proposed Shaw-Taylor merger. In the past eleven months, there have been only three community meetings regarding the Filbrick and Sumner merger. May 26th on Zoom, November 17th in person for all Roseland Dell community schools, and April 4th on Zoom for the Filbrick and Sumner together. Another meeting is planned for next week on May 1st. As a community, we have repeatedly told BPS that we need at least three weeks' notice for community meetings to ensure we can effectively advertise the meetings. However, only one week's notice has been provided. We do our best to advertise these last-minute meetings, but it's a stress on our already-busy family liaisons and family volunteers. For future community meetings, please respect our community by providing enough advance notice for advertising. And please, please ensure that these community meetings are not just performative engagement. In advance of the meetings, provide information on the topic of the meeting. After the meeting, provide meeting minutes for community members who could not attend. Explain how community input will be incorporated in our merger process. In addition, none of the meetings that have been that we have had have been conducted primarily in Spanish, despite the families in our merged communities being majority Spanish-speaking. As advocates, we've repeatedly asked BPS to do a Spanish-language meeting and it has not happened. We want to really appreciate the dedicated efforts of the design team for our merger and ask for more transparency about that process and those discussions. When the meetings began in early February, we were told the minutes would be shared with the wider community. When the meetings began in early February, we were told the minutes would be shared with the wider community. After a couple of weeks passed with no minutes, we were told there was a delay in the translation. To date, we have never received any meeting minutes for the design team. We have not received meeting minutes for the April 4 community meeting. This lack of transparency is harmful to the trust BPS needs to rebuild after the many missteps in this process. If the school committee votes to move forward with this merger, we ask that you make clear to BPS leadership that they need to demonstrate respect for our communities by authentically engaging us in the process of coming together as a merged school. Please also learn from the many failings in our experience as you design the merger process for other school communities. Thank you for your time and good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Young.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. So my name is Rachel Young. I'm a Sumner mom and Rosendale resident. And I'm here tonight to also talk about community engagement concerning the merger between the Sumner and Filbrick. I'm going to repeat some of the comments that Elizabeth has already made, and she said so eloquently, but I think they bear repeating. Concerning our community meeting on April 4, I'll be honest, I did not attend it. I have grown extremely exhausted of listening to BPS spin. It's regrettable that you ask a question and you don't get a straightforward answer, and that's assuming.
Ms. Young, you're muted. Okay. Seems like we've lost Rachel. So let's try Lauren Peter.
Hello. Have I put mute for the last couple of minutes?
I have. Is that Rachel?
Can I start over again?
Yes, could you turn your camera on for us, please?
My camera is on.
It looks like a screensaver.
I can see myself in a I don't, I don't know what to tell you. I'm in a, not at home. I don't know if the internet connection is weak, but my screen is on on my side.
Okay, all right. Please go ahead. Rachel? Rachel, I'm afraid, I'm afraid you're disconnected again. Please try to log back in. Lauren Peter?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Forgive me, I'm trying to if you want, I'll just do a minute. To recap some of the things that Elizabeth had said, and I think bears repeating, community engagement has not been the robust effort that we had expected. The April meeting that we had, it was in English. We've best Spanish language meeting for close to a year now. Our community is 60% Latino, and they deserve to have that meeting.
Rachel, I'm afraid we can't hear you. Could you please send in your written comments? And we'll share those with the committee. Lauren Peter?
Hello, my name is Lauren Peter. I'm a Roselandale resident, the parent of a third grader at the Sumner, family council member, and a design team member. I have endeavored throughout the design team process to remain positive and a good partner to the two school communities we are proposing to merge. What has become transparently clear in these meetings by looking at BPS-provided data is that we are bringing together two schools with populations of high-needs families. In order to create a new school that can thrive, there are baseline things that need to happen. I'm glad that a specific schedule for planning has been shared. That said, the level and quality of engagement needs to be built beyond what we are seeing now. I know my voice is not fully representative of the Sumner, and I want other voices uplifted as we look to academics, school culture, and what inclusion really means. Planning is only worthwhile if it's done in the structure of what is possible and what is right. We are asking the school committee to have BPS commit to some harm mitigation tactics prior to voting on the merger. I want to be clear, we are not asking for a no vote. We are asking for a commitment of quantifiable actions BPS will take to ensure our communities have the support we need during and in the years after the merger. Remember, you are proposing not only a new school of 700-plus students. We are a community that has many students with complex medical needs, housing insecurity, or homelessness, English language learners with many who are very new to our country, and a BIPOC majority. We have requested extra resources as a way to mitigate the harm caused by combining these two schools. We would like three to four social workers for at least the first two years after we move into the Irving building, at least two nurses, and at least two family liaisons. This also brings me to the point of leadership. The district needs to be transparent now regarding the process for making decisions about the leadership team of the new school community. That leadership team will be setting the tone for the school, and will need to plan with intention and data to set the school up for success. When and how will the leadership team for the school be hired? This is not a decision to wait on until 2025. It is a decision that should be made now so that this team can be involved in the design and planning process. I thank you for your time this evening and your attention.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Manna.
Good evening. My name is Jess Manna. I'm a Rosendale resident and a parent of a K one student at Charles Sumner. I'm here tonight to ask the school committee to ensure BPS commits to harm mitigation strategies before you vote on the Sumner-Filbrick merger proposal. As you know, combining these two school communities means the new school will have the highest concentration of BIPOC, English language learners, homeless students, and students in the care of DCF of any school in Rosendale. The statistics that you will see in the proposal are misleading. They do not show how our communities would be different if we merged with other Rosendale schools. The concentration of high-need learners would have been much lower if Sumner or Filbrick were merging with any other Rosendale school. For this reason, we are asking for a commitment of harm mitigation tactics, at least some of which are agreed upon before you vote. Based on the current statistics, the school's dual-language population will be at least 30%. Spanish is spoken by 60% of the families in the Sumner community. These statistics indicate that the new school becoming a dual-language school would be extremely beneficial. Will BPS commit to supporting the school through the transition to become dual-language? The ratio of high-need students to family liaison at another Rosendale school, the Mozart, is 60 to 1. The ratio of high-need students to family liaisons for the Sumner and Filbrick will be 380 to 1. This speaks to the need for more family liaison, social workers, and support staff for our new school. What will it take for BPS to commit to fund the need that they are creating with this merger? Given the already high level of need in the school, it is even more important that inclusion is done well. This means having two trained teachers in each inclusion classroom, a model that we know works at the Haley, the Roosevelt, and the Henderson, which is now falling apart because that model is no longer being followed. Will BPS commit to staffing each classroom appropriately and funding any training needed for teachers to become special education certified? According to the proposal document, BPS knows a high-quality inclusive community at a school with four strands, needs substantially separate spaces, seven to eight specialty classrooms, and four to five pull-out or therapeutic spaces. This means an ideal four-strand school will have around 50 educational spaces. Where are these spaces in the newly renovated Irving building? We only have 36 educational spaces in the current plan. Will BPS commit to working with the current design to ensure our high-need learners have the spaces that they need and deserve? In addition to these asks for the Sumner community, I also urge the school committee to listen to the Shaw and Taylor communities and pause that merger until it can be properly planned with a clear benefit to those schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Richardson.
Good evening. I come before you as a BPS teacher, serving since the fall of 2006, and also as a BPS parent. I have a first grader at the Sumner and a student who will be starting K one at the Sumner in the fall. And my family resides in both Roselandale and Matapan. In my teacher capacity, I have actually been through a school merger. And as a parent, I have been concerned with how little transparency there has been around how the Sumner-Filbrick merger is going to impact staff. My experience with a merger as a teacher has taught me that intentional planning around how to merge two staffs is crucial. You cannot simply throw together two groups of people who do not know each other and who come from their own distinctive and unique communities and expect a healthy school culture to just magically emerge. There needs to be planning for helping these two groups of people come together. Furthermore, there has been a complete lack of transparency to families around the fact that this merger will result in some staff members losing their positions. In conversations with other parents at the Sumner, many have expressed dismay and also shock when I touched upon the fact that there will not be positions for all members of both staffs at the new merged school. The numbers clearly show that there will just not be enough positions. Yet there has been no transparency around this fact. Families have relationships with staff, and when they send a second or third or fourth child to the Sumner, it is with the expectation that hopefully those children will be able to have many of the same teachers as their older children. So it could be very distressing or shocking to find out that not just one or two of those beloved teachers is not there anymore, but several are not there. And I'm worried that the way this merger is playing out, that that could definitely happen to many families without them realizing that it's going to happen. In addition, the district has been not very willing to discuss how decisions will be made around which staff members are cut. Would the decisions be made based on seniority? Are there other metrics that could be used? I think whatever metrics are used, it's really critical that staff losses are equitably spread across the two schools. And I really want to emphasize that point. As a teacher who's been through a merger, I think it is critical that staff losses are equitably spread across the two schools. If one of the schools is taking most or all of the losses, it can really create animosity among those two groups of staff, and that set the school up for a difficult beginning.
Thirty seconds.
The teachers at the Sumner have been absolutely amazing, every single one. And so I want to make sure that whatever happens, that they are all taken care of. They are incredible educators that the district does not want to lose. So I want assurances that the district will help support staff whose positions are cut so they can have a landing at another school. These are not educators that you want to lose. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bonnie McBride.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie McBride. I am the teacher librarian at Family High School and a co-chair of the BTU Library Team Faculty Senate, and I also reside in Jamaica Plain. April is National School Library Month, and I'm here tonight to celebrate and promote the historic investment by Boston Public Schools in school libraries and in certified school librarians. And I also just want to throw in an extended invitation to Superintendent Skipper to please come visit my library. We know through numerous national studies of the huge impact having a school librarian has on student achievement, specifically higher test scores, higher graduation rates, and better college and career outcomes. With our focus on equitable literacy, having a literacy leader in the librarian is essential for success. I'd like to share a quick story. It's just happened a few weeks ago at the end of March in my library. I had just wrapped up a research lesson with a class of juniors when a freshman came into the library from her ELA class to get a book. I greeted her, and in reply, she sighed, and she told me, minutes. I haven't watched a whole book in a year long. I thanked her for sharing that with me, and I told her it just meant that she hadn't found the right book yet, and we're going to keep trying. We talked about when she was choosing the books, what she's tried, specific genres. And then I ended up walking her over to our poetry section and pulled out a few popular books of poems. She chose one, checked it out. Two days later, she runs into my library and excitedly tells me she finished the book. She loved it so much, she asked where I got it because she wants to have her own copy. This is the magic of a staffed school library. Small interactions like this are happening daily in school libraries across our city because instead of only having 22 certified school librarians like we did last year, we now have 54 with even more being added next year. As we continue this investment of school libraries and certified school librarians, we also need to know that our library paraprofessionals play a significant role in school libraries. We need to make sure that a fully-staffed school library has a certified school librarian and a library paraprofessional if the school has over 500 students in it. Because this means that while a librarian is teaching, the library para can be having those magical interactions with students and multiple forms happening in the very complex. So I would like to just end by saying thank you again to Boston Public Schools for having this investment and getting closer to that quality guarantee for all of our schools. I look forward to the day when every student in BPS attends a school with a fully-staffed, culturally-relevant, up-to-date school library. And I also just want to wish happy National School Library Month to all my amazing colleagues who change lives every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first action item this evening is an in-kind donation of musical instruments with a total estimated value of $47,100. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Superintendent? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Superintendent?
Thank you.
Yes, Superintendent, is there anyone here that could talk about it? Or second, just to give the public an information about the donation?
Yes, we have, we have actually, I'm going to ask CFO Cooter. I know on the grants, he has our content folks lined up. Nate? Chair, we'll come back to that one.
Okay.
I believe Leslie can also speak to it, but she just stepped away for one minute.
Is Tony here? Tony's?
I didn't see Tony logged in.
He's on.
Yeah, he's, he's on.
Good evening. So this is a donation from the Mr. Hollis Opus Foundation to the Edison K. H. School. They are starting a new band program this year. So the instruments are flutes, clarinets, trumpets, and trombones to help with that growing program.
Wonderful. Thank you. And thank you for the donor as well. If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the in-kind donation as presented. Is there a motion?
No moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Allkins?
Yes.
Mr. Credit Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. LoPara? Ms. Palanco Garcia?
She had to leave.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil? Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. The in-kind donations are approved unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next action item is for grants for approval totaling seven hundred seventy four thousand, seven hundred and seventy nine dollars. I'll now open it up to the committee for questions and comments. Dr. Alkins?
Yes, thank you for the reports. I appreciate some, a little bit more detail around the indicators. For progress, what I am noticing is that a few of the grants. Have indicated when their sort of reports, their data reports will be available to us. I assume that also means us and the public because I think just in the spirit of transparency, we should be. We should be telling our families what we're doing sort of with the grant, like grants dollars. And I think for, for the committee, it would be good if we had. If we could develop some type of schedule that is actually looking at when we should probably be seeing those updates, particularly I know like. The first one for the idea, thinking about. Inclusion services and thinking about their, their survey comparisons between like. School year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and, you know, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. You know, are we actually seeing the proposed reductions and. Special ed like designations and like across the student populations, we just want to make sure that we're actually seeing these. And if not, we are understanding why this is not the, you know, that we're not seeing the progress that we're, you know, that we, that we desire. So I think it's just more of a comment of wanting to have a schedule so that we can actually know when we're checking in on which of these grants.
Yes, I think, I think, Dr. Alkins, I think we've added in kind of the sections, like the smart sections to like sort of address like how we're going to be measuring. But the cadence of like collecting the data and then being able to report out, that's something we can work towards like a master calendar for you. And when I mean you, I mean the public.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
No moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Here we now, Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Credit Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lopera, Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil, Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grant sir approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our first report this evening is the tentative collective bargaining agreement. Between the Boston School Committee and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Council ninety three, Local twenty eight fourteen storekeepers. Before I turn it over to Labor Relations Director Jeremiah Hassan, I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks. I'd also like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chair. So again, you know, we continue as we've, we've shared with the committee before to, to be focused and make progress on all of the union contracts. In bringing them to date, you know, up to date. This is important to us, you know, BPS is ninety percent people. That is what our, our district consists of in the schools and in central. And it's important that we have just contracts and that they're up to date. Tonight, you're going to hear specifically from Jeremiah, from Jeremiah around. This is an agreed upon collective bargaining agreement for our storekeepers. This is a relatively small group, but they play a pretty pivotal role and have been in collecting and recycling materials from our schools. And they also help to manage, for instance, the delivery and the distribution of materials to schools. So we rely on them heavily, so they're small but mighty. And so I just want to thank the union for their collaboration throughout the process. And for the work that their members do every day to support our schools in our district. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeremiah Hassan.
Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Chair Robinson, and committee members for having me here tonight. I'm very excited to present this tentative agreement with the storekeepers. As Superintendent Skipper mentioned, this is a group that we have a, a strong working relationship with. They play a pivotal role in our schools and. We hope that this agreement is voted on and we believe it should be approved in its fair and favorable. Agreement for this group. It's very straightforward. It's actually two separate agreements. Cut into three-year deals, which we've seen with some of our other units. The first three is just base wages of two percent in fiscal year twenty one, two point five percent in fiscal year twenty two. And two point five percent increases in fiscal year twenty three. In addition to the general base wage increases, we have also agreed to the COVID-related lump sum bonus in fiscal year twenty two. So that's the, the full first three years of the agreement is strictly the wages and the lump sum payment. For the second agreement, which is also a three-year agreement. We have agreed to wage increases, which are consistent with our other units under the facilities department. It is fiscal year twenty four, it's an increase of two point five percent. Fiscal year twenty five is an increase of two percent and fiscal year twenty six is an increase of two percent. In addition to the general wage increases, we have also agreed to update the holiday language to be consistent with our other collective bargaining agreements. Which is changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day and adding Juneteenth. That's it for this agreement. It's very straightforward. Again, we have a good relationship with this unit. Neither side needed major substantive changes to the contract. And we look forward to continuing our strong partnership looking forward. Have any, happy to answer any questions if you have any?
Are there any questions?
And if not, I just want to reiterate what Superintendent Skipper said and thank this, the bargaining unit. And the president is Devin Lynch, who worked very well together to get this deal done quickly. And again, we think it's a, a strong deal for the unit and for the district and we would recommend that you vote to approve it.
All right, thank you. And the committee will look forward to taking action on these agreements at a future meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.
All righty. Our main report this evening is a capital planning update, including long-term planning and merger proposals. Before I turn it over to the chief of capital planning, Del Vern Stanislaus and the team. I want to invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks. Again, I'd also like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to our sister, to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. So you know, one of the first things that I did when I became superintendent was to ask the team for a briefing. On all the capital projects, but specifically the merger proposals. And, you know, I heard from the community that they, you know, that they felt things were moving too quickly. And that they didn't feel heard. They didn't feel that there was authentic engagement. You know, after meeting with school committee, we decided back in the fall to slow things down a bit. You know, pushing the implementation date from the initial proposal of next school year to school years twenty four, twenty five, and twenty five, twenty six. We also established design teams for each school community. And have been meeting weekly with the team since early in the new school, early in the new calendar year. The design teams are made up of families, teachers, staff, and the school leaders from each community. As well as capital planning and other central office staff to support. I think we've learned a lot. We have certainly apologized in the process where we've fallen short. And I think we're committed to continuously improve the process. These are not the only merger proposals that will come before this body in years to come. I think we've spoken about a declining enrollment. And we've spoken about the need for, you know, to roll out inclusion. And so there'll be much driving in the years to come, us looking at how we can through mergers and sometimes closures. Start to right-size our system. Combining and reconfiguring schools, it's an essential strategy to address some of the district's longstanding challenges. And to really take advantage of great opportunities to strengthen communities as one. I do want to recognize that in many ways, the Shaw, Taylor, Philbrick, and Sumner. You know, these opportunities are sort of paving the way for other communities that will come behind them. And I am really appreciative and sincerely grateful to each of these four schools for holding us accountable. For building a process that really centers students and families and improves the school experience. And when we get things right, to let us know that, and when we don't get things right, to also let us know that. Any merger or, or school reconfiguration is disruptive. I've, as a school leader, been through it four times. And there's just, no matter what the planning, it is disruptive. But disruptions can also be powerful forces for good. And, you know, as we build out the supportive infrastructure. Around the design teams to bring resources and thoughtful planning. You know, I'm, I'm hopeful and I'm confident that these disruptions will improve ultimately the teaching and learning experience. Articulating and preserving the assets of each of the schools. And building a school that's even greater than the sum of its parts. The process to get there can be challenging, but the end result can be a really positive thing. There's lots of technical considerations when you're merging two school communities, but, you know, we often use the terms join school community. Or combine school community to signify that we're not asking two school communities to exist together, coexist. In a shared space. Instead, we're actually providing and will provide support and resources. To bring two separate communities together intentionally. Leveraging the assets of each community to build a school community that better serves its students, families, and educators as one. Joining these communities, you know, requires us to start by agreeing on our shared core values. And you heard some of the parents speak to that from the design teams. It's these core values that will set the foundation for all of the technical planning that will come after that. So it's really an essential first step. We're bringing these proposals forward tonight now because these school communities need certainty. So that we can use all of next year to build community. Finalize the details and give families time to understand their options. So that we're ready for a combined school community in the coming years. You're going to hear about some of the benefits for these communities tonight. But I, I want us to keep in mind that this isn't just about one individual school. This is about the larger system. And the challenges that larger system faces as a whole. And I know this committee is well aware of those. These changes are never easy. And as a committee and the body that governs this district. We need your feedback and collaboration on these decisions that we must make together. Not just on these two proposals tonight, but I think also about the sequencing and the timelines for the future decisions that are needed to. Tonight, you will hear from the chief of capital planning, Del Stanislaus, who you all, you all know. Chief of Schools, Dr. Drew Eccleston. And Senior Advisor to Mayor Wu on Youth and Schools, Rebecca Granger. And I really want to, to just really give a shout out to Rebecca. Because she has really been working hand in hand with us on this. Again, to make sure that communities feel engaged, communities feel heard, and to bring her strategic thinking to the plate. Del has done, you know, she dove right in and tackled this as she did transportation. Which is always to keep students and families at the center of her, of her thinking, her actions, her passion. And of course, Dr. Eccleston always brings such expertise to the plate when it comes to the role of academics in schools. In something like a merger situation, his seasoning and experience as a previous superintendent. You know, we've been working closely with the mayor and her team as well on this critical work. And it's just true collaboration that not only speaks for this year, but will speak for many years to come. As we have a good deal of work to do in this area. Before I turn it over to Chief Stanislaus, I want to thank the school leaders, the school staffs. The families from the Philbrick, the Sumner, the Shaw, and the Taylor schools for their continued collaboration. You know, as we try to work to bring the communities together into newly formed communities. The work we're doing today, it's a, and it's an important step forward for their students and for the future students of the district. And it starts with those communities and their willingness to join with us to do that deep thinking, as difficult as it can be at times. So thank you to them. And with that, I will turn it over to Del.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, Chair and members of the school committee. I'm here tonight to present two different merger proposals for the Shaw, Taylor, and Sumner Philbrick communities. But before I share the presentation, I want to share a reflection. This morning, I had the opportunity to attend a renaming ceremony for one of our BPS schools commemorating Melvin H. King. Mel has been a leader in this city for as long as I can remember. One of his famous sayings was, don't do things to the community, do it with the community. As I enter into month three of this role, I take that spirit with me. I want to acknowledge, we haven't always gotten it right. I can't change the past. And there are big decisions to make that we won't always agree on. But I am committed to working with the community to create learning environments that see, see and value the needs of our current and future BPS students. I want to start my presentation off by thanking the school communities, our students. Our principals and the larger community for working and collaborating with us through this process. With that, I'd like to dive into tonight's presentation. As the superintendent stated in her opening remarks. These won't be the only mergers or reconfiguration we bring to the school committee. Combining or reconfiguring schools when done thoughtfully. Will help address some of BPS's most complex operational challenges and ensure better outcomes for our students. It will help deliver higher quality instruction. It mitigates spaces, space constraints, and create pre-K through six pathways. It solves the financial issues we see in under-enrolled schools. And it supports a sustainable staffing model with the right number of positions and sustainable workloads. Each of these areas is interrelated, but very important to ensuring better outcomes for our students. Next slide. BPS has made a commitment to implementing inclusion in every school across the district. Our work around implementation and inclusive practices need to be done in collaboration with our families, communities, and educators. Inclusive schools will ensure every student has a continuum of services to help them thrive. Inclusive instruction and instruction. Inclusive instruction and instructional practices. Will require physical space, strong budgets, sustainable staffing. And continuous professional development and supports for staff. In school year twenty-three, twenty-four, several dozen elementary schools. Will not have the physical space to maintain a double-strand inclusive educational program. Including the Shaw and the Philbrick. These smaller schools are generally not capable of expanding inclusion district-wide. This leads to an over-concentration of students with disabilities in a small number of larger elementary schools. On the next slide, my colleague Drew Eccleston. Will talk through what a two-strand school and a four-strand school can look like.
Thank you Dell, I am uh going to take my time on the slide. Uh, because I think it's really important and instructive, not only in the context of our discussion for this evening. But in terms of future planning for the Boston Public Schools. I want to be clear that this isn't uh meant to illustrate a specific school. But instead to look at a set of models and a range of options. Uh, that that might be uh informed the way that we're thinking about school organizations into the future. I also want to be transparent that in this model that we're looking at on the screen. It's reflecting a range of inclusive options. And sub-separate spaces that intentionally provide opportunities for inclusion. And access to a continuum of services as required by a child's IP. I want to start on the left side of the, the graphic that's on the left, which is labeled a model two-strand school. The model on the left reflects the minimum of what we might expect for our schools as we move forward. You will see that there are two inclusive classrooms. That serve students in the general education setting using grade level standards at each grade level. And that prioritizes a range of inclusive opportunities for students with disabilities. That range of uh access to inclusion. Or partial inclusion could involve things like specials, lunch or homeroom. To more full academic experiences over the course of the day. In addition, you'll notice in what I think is pink uh and maybe green. Um, spaces uh that are designed specifically. For specialty classrooms and spaces for therapeutic and or academic support. These spaces could be hubs uh to provide push-out su- uh, um, put, push-in support to students. As well as uh pull-out services for students as required by their IEP. I want to take a moment now to move to the right side of the slide. To focus on the model four-strand school. I want to be transparent that at least from an academic perspective. That particularly as Boston thinks about new construction projects, renovation projects. That there is a strong preference for the four-strand model whenever possible. You'll see a much more expansive uh set of options in this model. And it begins by having four strands of general education inclusive classrooms at each grade level. Moving up from K zero to grade six. With a corresponding substantially separate uh program or space in this model. That includes opportunities for partial to more full inclusion over the course of the academic day. You'll also see that in this model, there is some uh intentional planning. For specialty classes, for resource support, for therapeutic spaces. As well as potentially pull-out spaces as well as hubs for push-in services for students. Uh, I want to just acknowledge that one mistake that people make in terms of strategic planning for this. Is that all too often we only account for the core classes that we're thinking about in the context of a school. But the planning uh for schools must think beyond just the core classrooms, which are. Clearly the most critical spaces in the school. But we must also plan for some of the specialty rooms and other spaces that are critical to a high-quality education. My colleague Dell will now talk about some of the impact when we don't consider those spaces. In the context of our larger strategic planning.
Thanks Drew. This is a graph some of you may recognize from twenty nineteen. When the School Committee was considering a policy to move toward a pre-K through six. And seven through twelve grade configuration model. At that time, only half of our elementary schools were in buildings that had more than fifteen classrooms. But as we just saw, inclusive two-strand schools need more than fifteen classrooms. The planning work we're doing right now will give us a sharper analysis of our current building capacity. But it's safe to say that only about a quarter of our elementary schools. Can comfortably fit an inclusive two-strand school. Next slide. Again, each of these four challenges. Instruction, physical space, enrollment, budgets and staffing are related. As we work to expand inclusion and also expand early childhood. Education, our schools need more physical space. As we accelerate school construction and renovation through the Green New Deal for BPS. We will build schools that are large enough to comfortably fit at least two full-strand schools. And designed for inclusive practices. In short to medium turn, term, combining two schools together in one building wherever possible. And across two campuses, campuses when it's not. Will allow us to create the kinds of school communities that, that can meet instructional goals. Including creating inclusive schools that can serve every child. We could also open up physical spaces for services and supports outside of traditional core classrooms. Next slide. On this slide, it shows that the total enrollment at BPS has declined by eight thousand students. Or fourteen percent from school year thirteen, fourteen to school year twenty-two, twenty-three. Broad demographic trends particularly explain this trend. For comparison, residents' births during the cor- correspondent type per- time period. Declined by about nine percent. Declines are concentrated in the elementary grades, which suggests that they will continue in the near future. Over the last ten years, BPS has not reduced seat capacity to match decline in enrollment. From school year eighteen, nineteen to school year twenty-one, twenty-two. While enrollment in grades K two through five declined by three thousand, three hundred and seventy-one students. Total capacity was reduced only by one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two seats. We have worked with schools to identify strategic opportunities to reduce capacity. By closing partially filled classrooms, leading to more sustainable school designs and budgets. Currently, there are few remaining opportu- there are very few remaining opportunities to consolidate classrooms. Without closing, merging or significantly reconfiguring our s- our schools. The ongoing pre-K through six and seven through twelve school design study. Led by the D- DLR Group and managed by the City of Boston. Public Facilities Department and BPS Office of Capital Planning. Will develop updated capacity calculation for each school building based on full range of flexible and. And inclusive programming that BPS seeks to offer in every school. When this study is complete later in twenty-twenty-three, the combined capacity analysis would support the development of a long-term facilities plan. For the district with a clear roadmap for aligning BPS capacity with our student population. Next slide. Enrollment trends affect school budgets. Because of the weighted student funding model. Under enrollment has major budget implicat- implications for individual schools and for the entire district. The WSF formula means that as a school's enrollment changes, funding level change. The fullness of classroom determines the funds available for support and services outside the, the traditional core classroom. In the diagram on the screen, a hypothetical twenty-five student classroom. That is a hundred percent full would receive a WSF allocation. That not only allows the school to operate the classroom. With the bare minimum of operational support and staffing. But also invest nearly twenty-eight thousand in resources outside the core, core classroom. With the same required expenditures on core staffing, a twenty-five student classroom. That is only fifty percent full would run a deficit of more than forty-four thousand. Straining the school's overall budget and limiting the ability to invest in specialists. Enrichment, programming and additional support staff or other resources. Since school year twenty-one, twenty-two, in response to COVID nineteen. BPS has responded to decline in enrollment through its hold harmless policy, which has spent a hundred and seventeen million. To continue to operate classrooms with fewer and fewer students. As BPS prepares for the end of. End of federal S R funding, it will no longer be possible to continue the hold harmless policy. Without critically examining our school's overall capacity and reconfiguring schools. To create fuller classrooms. Repeated across the district, this dynamic of under-enrolled classrooms compromises the financial stability of many schools. Particularly schools that serve a higher proportion of Black and Latinx students. In school year twenty-two, twenty-three. The bottom, the bottom quartile of schools range from fifty-five to seventy-four percent full. Students in the bottom quartile are on average eighty-four percent Black and Latinx. Compared to schools in the top quarter of fullness, which are on the average sixty-four percent Black and Latinx. This means that Black and Latinx students are more likely to attend a school that cannot easily afford the specialists. Enrichment, programming or support staff. That improve a student's educational experience, strengthen outcomes and close opportunity gaps. Combining or reconfiguring schools. In ways that lead to fuller classrooms will stabilize school budgets. Enabling schools to invest in the wraparound supports. That benefit BPS students, families and communities. Next slide. Consolidating classroom helps to address the district's staffing challenges related to hiring and retention. BPS teacher shortages mirror nationwide trends which the pandemic has exacerbated. Staffing shortages lead to classrooms that long-term substitute teachers or teachers lead. Without the appropriate licensure to serve certain students or class, classes. By consolidating classrooms, combining schools makes it more likely that permanent. Fully licensed educators would lead classrooms. It also means that schools can direct a limited pool of FTEs not only to keep core classrooms. At a minimum staffing level, but also to expand programming through specialists or other enrichment opportunities. Finally, consolidating classrooms and stabilizing staffing levels will also improve educator retention. By reducing burnout. When long-term substitute leads classrooms, other educators at the school often end up increasing their own workload. Since under enrollment dynamics particularly affects schools with more Black and Latinx students. These staffing pressures may disproportionately affect educators of color. A well-staffed school helps to maintain sustainable workloads for educators and school staff. Supporting the long-term retention of BPS dedicated educators. Consolidating classrooms would lead to educator layoffs. When reconsider- when reconfigurations do eliminate a particular position at a particular school. The Office of Human Capital will support that educator and find an appropriate position elsewhere in BPS. Through individual group and strategic matching support. I would now like to turn it over to my colleague Rebecca Granger, Senior Advisor on the Youth and Schools. Who will now walk you through the journey to a joined community.
Thank you Dell. Um, hello School Committee, um, and uh everyone who's joining. Um, throughout this proposal, as you've heard multiple times tonight, you will see joining school communities. Language is so incredibly important, and this language uh is a very intentional choice. We are not asking two school communities to exist together in a shared space. We are providing support and resources to bring two separate communities together intentionally. Leveraging the assets of each community to build a school that better serves students, families and educators. Bringing two school communities together is, into one is disruptive. And I want to acknowledge that with change, there is loss. But this is also an opportunity, an opportunity for us to be thoughtful about better serving school communities. With adequate resources and support, disruptions can serve as a catalyst for positive change. We know these will not be the only school reconfigurations that will need to occur. And so it's very important that we are building a process that will support other communities in the future. And so we'll need to be thoughtful and we'll need to learn and grow throughout this process. So we need to take the time to uh intentionally build in reflection. That means identifying what worked well, what didn't and what we've learned. We also need to build in refining, shift how, the shifting how we engage in planning and design and implementation based on our reflections. And we also need to record to capture and codify the process for bringing school communities together. Because this will provide a foundation for future reconfigurations or transitions. We are committed to providing concrete support to the Sumner, Philbrick and Shaw Taylor communities as they engage in becoming joined school communities. Part of this commitment was re-energizing the design teams. The BPS Office of Capital Planning reconvened collaborative teams for the Shaw, Taylor and Philbrick Sumner. To guide planning efforts and community engagement. I want to extend a huge thank you to all of the members of the design team, to the school leaders, the school superintendents and the families and staff. They have given so much time, energy and incredible thought partnership. To thinking through how we might go on this journey together and to considering values for their joint communities. Their thinking and openness has deeply influenced this proposal and the structure of the journey. Currently, uh, the design team meets weekly. Um, and if the proposal is approved, we'll shift to the schedule, we'll shift the schedule to bi-weekly meetings. we'll shift the schedule to bi-weekly meetings and incorporate regular community meetings. Okay, so think about this in an eight-week cycle. Week one, week three, and week five would be design team meetings, and week seven would be a community meeting. So it's constantly on this eight-week, two-month cycle. We have heard the need for increased engagement and advance notice. So by building in a routine process, it allows school communities to know when the next community meeting will be far in advance. The regular cycle also provides an opportunity for engaging in a different structure and to invite the community in as thought partners. We're also hoping such a routine might attract additional voices into these spaces, because our community meetings have not represented the full communities in both joined communities. During these meetings, it's a space to share what decisions have been made, to communicate what's next, and to invite feedback and thought partnership, and to really build spaces that will have an effect on the joined school community. The community engagement planning will be in close partnership with the design team and school communities. On Monday and Tuesday of this week, the design teams helped to plan next week's meetings on May first and fourth in partnership with the capital planning team. And each team designed a different format to best fit how they wanted to invite their communities in. We also want to build up engagement in other ways. So we'll seek out additional avenues to reach a wider demographic. This includes increasing the number of language-specific community meetings, for example, in Spanish and Haitian Creole, in partnering closely with school staff who serve students and families every day, and leveraging methods of communication already deployed by schools, hosting in frequented public places, communicating in school newsletters using social media. And we also recognize the importance of in-person conversations and connections to share information, learn from experiences, and receive feedback and concerns. The capital planning team has been listening and is shifting the community engagement practices to meet what communities have asked for. It takes a lot of work to join two school communities, and there are many facets that go into creating a successful school. So we want to share an overview of what this journey will look like. In the proposal, we describe the major buckets of work to build a joined school community, as well as the commitments to supporting the schools. These are major buckets. It's not an exhaustive list. There will be topics of importance to explore that will arise.
Excuse me, excuse me, could you slow down for a bit, please?
Oh, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. These are major buckets, not an exhaustive list. There will be topics of importance to explore that will arise organically as the school communities plan together. As new topics arise, the capital planning team will partner with the design team and school communities to identify the supports needed to plan for a school community that better serves students, families, and staff. The proposed schedule lays out a linear process, but since these topics are so deeply intertwined, the process must be iterative and nimble over time. The first bucket, and you'll see this on the slide to the far left, is forming shared core values. We are asking two communities, each with their own guiding values, to become a single unified community. They must therefore agree upon shared beliefs and values to guide the new joined school community. As difficult decisions arise, and they will throughout this process, they already have started, core values will serve as foundation for future decision-making and how we serve and come together as a joint school community. Both design teams have been developing core values, and the core values are being shared with the wider community and will continue to be refined and deeply informed by community feedback. One of the key pieces of insight offered by the design team members was being clear about the commitments being made to support the transition. So throughout, with each bucket, I will give a brief overview and then also the specific support as the school communities engage in planning and decision-making. Okay, so shared core values was the first bucket. After shared core values, the next bucket of work is academics, climate, and culture. Within this bucket, there are multiple strands: alignment of curriculum, expanding academic programming and enrichment, inclusion, and asset shifts and building school culture. Starting with alignment of curriculum, the joining schools must act as partner in determining a shared academic vision. This means choosing complementary district-approved curricula and building an intentional alignment of learning from grades K zero through six. Our commitment to supporting this work is the Departments of Schools and Accountability and Teaching and Learning will support schools in understanding their options for choosing the district-approved academic curriculum. And the Office of Opportunity Gaps will support the design team and school communities as guided by the Racial Equity Planning Tool and understanding the demographics of the joined school community, determining which students are being underserved, and identifying and aligning strategies to better serve them. I want to point out on the slide that the Racial Equity Planning Tool has been used and will continue to be used throughout this entire process. And I just want to give a shout out to the Office of Opportunity Gaps for deeply helping the design team and me think through how much this is a complex and iterative process, and so the Racial Equity Planning Tool will constantly be evolving and capturing thoughts. The second piece under academics is expanding academic programming and enrichment. Joining the school communities allows the consolidation of classrooms previously underrolled, under-enrolled. This creates an opportunity to shift the way full-time equivalent or F T E positions are, and funds are allocated to better align with the academic vision of the school. Shifted F T Es provide an opportunity for schools to explore how they might expand the academic and enrichment programs their students experience. Our commitment to supporting this work, the Department of Teaching and Learning will support merging school communities to understand the realistic options for expanding academic programming as informed by budget and space. This includes helping school communities envision what is possible and building an understanding of what a program entails, such as the curriculum and materials needed. Again, the opportunity, the Office of Opportunity Gaps will support the design team and school communities, guided by the rep, in making strategic decisions that are grounded and serving more equitably. The next piece is inclusion. The Office of Special Education is ensuring the implementation of inclusive practices district-wide and is currently working with schools to build models for support, planning, and implementation. Core to this mission is establishing school-based inclusion planning teams to engage in the work of building structures and practices to sustain and foster a fully inclusive culture. The commitment to the work is that the Office of Special Education will support each joined school community in forming an inclusion planning team. The joint school community will also receive new resources in alignment with the citywide fifty-million multi-year commitment to support the successful implementation of inclusion. The Shaw Taylor community will begin this work as early as the summer of two thousand and twenty-three, and the Philbrick Sumner community will begin in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three. The last piece under academics is assets, shifts, and building school culture. Each school brings assets, pieces of their school climate, culture, and programming that serve students, families, and staff well. And each school also brings things that aren't going well. So here, the communities need to decide what to intentionally preserve and what to release, as well as to consider programming and practices in relation to areas such as before and after school services, building strategic community partnerships, intentionally inviting in family partners, and building a school culture that is culturally affirming and intentional about accessibility. The commitment is that the capital planning team will partner with the design team and school communities with the supports needed as topics arise. The Office of Opportunity Gaps, again, will continue to support in making strategic decisions that are grounded in serving equitably. After academics, comes budget planning, resource advocacy, and community partnership. Number three on the slide. This bucket is placed after the academics, climate, and culture because it allows the schools to be strategic and aligning their budget to the mission and vision of their joined community. Each school has an allotted budget determined in large part by the students the schools serve. Much of the budget allocation is used primarily to fund staffing positions. Remaining funds are directed at the discretion of school leadership and partnership with the school site council. Resource allocation is most effective when aligned to the implementation of a clear mission designed to best serve students, families, and staff. The Finance Department will support the joined school communities in developing a budget that sustainably aligns to their use of resources and to their strategic mission. And that was the commitment for that bucket. Moving to the right, bucket four is staffing. Like the budget, the staffing of a school should directly support the mission of the school. Bringing two school communities together requires an evaluation of staffing to fit the structure, vision, and needs of the joined school community. The process of shifting positions is not easily, is not easy, and naturally raises anxiety. We will build a process where teachers and staff feel and are supported throughout the transition. This process will take many partners working closely together: the B T U, the Office of Human Capital, the Department of Schools and Accountability, and the Division of Equity, Strategy, and Opportunity Gaps. This process will be both proactive and collaborative. Our commitment, staff in school communities that are undergoing a merger will know staffing decisions prior to the B P S hiring period and be supported throughout the transition. The Office of Human Capital will meet with staff undergoing shifts individually and in groups to provide strategic matching support throughout this process. Bucket five is operations. Each school community is different, and we know that different challenges and needs will arise. Each community will have additional support from a capital planning manager. They will serve as an important partner in connecting the joined school communities to various B P S operations departments as, as, as support is needed. And as different pieces come up around facilities, food and nutrition services, transportation, technology. Whatever comes up, they will be partners in solving it. The commitment is that the capital planning project manager and team will be attentive to the needs of the joining schools, help to identify operational challenges, and connect the school to the appropriate B P S department as topics and problems arise to reduce barriers and solve problems. The last bucket, six, is preparing for transition. Transitions can be difficult and disrupt learning. Therefore, in this process, it will be vital to give attention and plan support for how we transition students, families, and staff. Communities have different needs, and therefore the process may look different. Being thoughtful about transitions is an opportunity to learn from communities that have gone through similar processes to understand how to best support the transitioning school communities. While preparing for the transition sits towards the end of this proposal schedule, it occurs throughout, including spaces for the communities to come together so that families, students, and staff get to know one another and become a joined community before they share space. I just want to give one example, and this came from a parent's suggestion. Capital planning in partnership with Public Facilities Department is facilitating the Philbrick and Sumner students helping to plan the playground as part of the renovated Irving Building. This not only elevates students' voice, but begins to introduce class and playmates, and we're excited for more opportunities like this to arise. The commitment with transitions is that the capital planning team will work in close partnership with the design team and school communities to build opportunities for learning and community-building events that facilitate smooth transitions. I'll now pass back to Drew to speak about the specific school communities.
Thank you, Rebecca. Before I begin, I just want to acknowledge that as a district, we have to begin to take really important steps to move our system toward what ought to be true for all of our students. For me, that means increased access to inclusion, spaces that should be true at every school, things like spaces that are true physical education classrooms, specialty courses that are critical to a world-class education, and that students should have access to multiple tiers of instruction in spaces that are dedicated for classroom space. I'm going to walk through the proposals or the original, the new ideas that we have relative to the configuration of both of these proposed mergers. I'm going to start with the P H Shaw and Charles Taylor School. As it relates to this, if we could switch to the next slide, the proposal is to join the Shaw and Taylor into a single, but in the immediate to-campus school community serving grades K zero to grade six in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The immediate proposal, as I'll walk through in a moment, uses and leverages the Shaw Building to serve lower grades and the Taylor Building to serve upper grades. To be clear, the expectation is that these schools would be unified into a single building, likely on the Mattapan-Dorchester line, in a state-of-the-art new school building that offers all of the space that students need for the future for their learning. Next slide. I want to begin by just talking a little bit about the configuration map for school year twenty-three, twenty-four, which would be next school year. You'll see in this configuration map, on the left, you'll see the P H Shaw as a number of classrooms that are labeled in blue for general education and inclusive classrooms, as well as two classrooms that are substantially separate for students in K zero and grade, grade one. You'll see on the right side what the grade configuration map looks like for the Taylor for next school year, which includes a number of grade levels, inclusion classrooms, general education classrooms, S E I classrooms that are generally targeted with the specific language of Haitian Creole, two classrooms that serve students with interrupted formal education, as well as two classrooms that serve students in a substantially separate setting for students with intellectual impairment. Those are the proposed configuration maps for next year. Want to dig in a little bit further to explain what this might look like in practice into the future. You can move to the next slide. This table articulates both the capacity for the P H Shaw and the Taylor, as well as the enrollment and the open seats. You'll see that both school communities have a number of open seats, have had a number of open seats over the last few years, with the reduction in the open seats for the P H Shaw as a result of capping enrollment to ensure that grade levels could continue to move up through the P H Shaw. Next slide, please. This is a chart that articulates of the racial and ethnic identities of the school communities. You'll begin first with looking at what that information looks like for the Taylor School Community, what the information looks like for the P H Shaw Community, what the data looks like for a combined Taylor and Shaw Community. And you can juxtapose that with the K to five enrollment for all of B P S, as well as the data for all B P S schools. This is an important part of the Racial Equity Planning Tool and the data that the design teams and the community must look at as future planning continues. Next slide. This is a proposed configuration map for school year twenty-four, twenty-five. I will show several different. I will show several different looks at this uh, that will be important for the design teams at the respective schools to con, to consider as we move forward. You'll see broadly here, um, a number of inclusive uh, classrooms as well general education classrooms from K zero to grade six. As well as a set of classrooms that support students in the SEI setting. And in classrooms for students uh, with interrupted formal education. As well as uh, two substantially separate classrooms. Next slide. This is one proposal uh, that the team will consider uh, as there's moving forward, which is to potentially look at a model in which the K zero, K one and K two classrooms would be housed at the current PH Shaw. In grades one, two, three, four, five and six at the Taylor School. You can see the orientation of each one of those classrooms uh, as uh, it would be proposed in this specific model. Next slide. This is another option. Uh, this is uh, including K zero, K one, K two and grade one at the current PH Shaw building. In grades two to six at the Taylor. You see the way that this could look uh, in something that the design team would be looking at uh, as part of their continued planning as Rebecca um, so eloquently proposed in the previous slide. Next slide. This is a, a, a table uh, that articulates the percentage of students by program type. Um, both for the Taylor School. The PH Shaw Community. The proposed combined Taylor Shaw Community. And as that compares to the K to five enrollment more broadly across BPS. And BPS more broadly across the K twelve. This will also be important information uh, for the teams to consider as part of their continued work with the racial equity planning tool. Next slide. Now I want to spend a moment talking about, about the proposed merger for the Phil, Philbrick and Sumner communities. The proposal here is to join the Philbrick and Sumner into a single school community. Serving grades K zero to grade six in twenty-five, twenty-six in the newly renovated Irving Building. Next slide. These schools have different models uh, than the ones that we just looked at relative to the PH Shaw and to the Taylor. On the left, um, you'll see the uh, classroom configuration map for school year twenty-three, twenty-four for the Philbrick community. You'll notice that it's a single strand school with an inclusion classroom, K zero to K one. And general education classrooms from uh, K two to grade six. If we move to the right, you'll see what that configuration map, proposed configuration map looks like for school year twenty-three, twenty-four for the Sumner Community. Starting at the bottom uh, in K, K one, you'll see uh, two um, general education classrooms and an SEI Spanish classroom. As we sort of move up, you'll see what the model looks like uh, for K two, grade one, grade two, grade three, four, five to grade six. Next slide please. This is a similar uh, table of what we looked at with the Shaw and Taylor Community. You'll see in this case um, that there are a number of open seats at both the Philbrick and Sumner Community. And that this is based on December enrollment at each point uh, for the respective school years. And also a note here uh, that both the Philbrick and the Sumner added grade six in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Next slide. This looks at uh, the racial and ethnic identities of the school communities, starting first with the Philbrick. Then followed by the Sumner. What a combined proposed Philbrick, Sumner merger would look like. As compared to K to five enrollment across BPS and then all of BPS at the far right. Next slide. And this is what I proposed Sumner configuration map uh, for school year twenty-four, twenty-five would look like. Starting at K zero on the bottom, the number of inclusion um, classrooms moving up through the school to grade six. General education classrooms, bilingual Spanish classroom and an uh, LD substantially separate classroom for students with that need. Next slide. Uh, this is what the percentage of um, students with disabilities in a merged school community would look like from no IP um, resource support, inclusion support and substantially separate support. Again, you'll see that information for the Philbrick Community, the Sumner, the combined Philbrick, Sumner Community. Pose a combined Philbrick, Sumner Community and K five for BPS and then all of BPS. Next slide. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Dell Stanislaw, who I think wants to give uh, a huge thanks to um, a few additional people before we turn it back to the superintendent.
Uh, thank you, Drew. Um, I want to close this um, our presentation off uh, this evening. Um, by saying one, we will continue to build on this process in collaboration with our school design teams. Um, to ensure that students receive the outcome that they need. Um, I would like to thank our school design team. I'd like to thank the capital planning project managers who've been supporting this work. I would like to thank um, our colleagues on, at the mayor's office who have been supporting this process. Our community engagement team has, who has really leaned in and support our, our OAG team who has really leaned in and support um, this process and collaboration with our schools teams and our school community. I would just like to share those thank yous tonight as we close off and I pass it back to Superintendent Skipper.
It's great. Um, so just thank you to the team for just, I know there was a lot of information there um, to process. And I, I, it was really, I found myself also even having seen the presentation multiple times, just uh, going through it, I learned something and see something different each time. So um, I just want to thank you for all of your preparation and chair, I think uh, the team is uh, prepared to answer questions from the committee.
Great. Again, I want to thank the team as well and now open it up to the committee for questions. Mr. Carded Hernandez and then Dr. Alkins.
Dr. Alkins, if you want to go first, you're welcome to.
Uh, I mean.
Before.
No, I mean, I think I'm still trying to get them all organized. I'm, I'm sorry, you can go first. I'm trying to get them all organized. Um.
Well, I think we might have multiple rounds. So how about that?
I'm sure we will.
So I will just say, I'm naming this at the top for the sort of teacher in May. Parallel process is like, I needed some chunking here. And so for the future, this is like too big for like one presentation without at least moments for us to stop. Like I felt like the sort of first half around process was its own presentation. And then the school-specific proposals, each as two separate proposals were their own presentation. And I think the conversation will just be more meaningful because it's, I just think that's necessary. So food for thought. I, I hope in the future we can sort of think about that for the continuity of communication because it becomes sort of like a, a lecture that we're supposed to respond to versus a dialogue that we want to engage in. Um, so that's my hope for the future. The, maybe if we can pull the, the deck back up, it might be easier to refresh my memory and I have an old one in front of me. So I'm not, that's printed. So I was trying to also get the new one during the um, during the presentation. If we can go, I'm specifically sort of, I guess we'll start at slide four. I have a question about. If we can pull it up so I can also see it. Is that possible?
Team, is that possible? We have the technology.
I got you. Sorry. I'm just a little slow at the uptake over here. Give me one second.
I'm just watching my seconds tick away and I'm fueled by anxiety.
You'll have multiple rounds.
I guess, okay, so this is perfect. One, this was really helpful to sort of understand how we're thinking about modeling. I guess the part that's confusing me here, and then I eventually we have to get to this, the school proposal specifically, but I'm, I guess this is the first time we're really talking about process um, in this sort of way. This is the first time we're talking about process in this sort of way. So once it's done loading.
It looks like it's stuck.
Good to know because that's not what it looks like on my screen. Give me one second. Sorry.
I don't envy you, Dr. Eccleson. This would also give, this would be another thing that would fuel me with it.
Sorry, I'm super stressed right now.
Don't. This is a safe space.
Someone else is going to do it. I'm a mess. Sorry.
While it's pulling, ah, Megan, thank you so much. So slide four. This is what I guess I don't understand in the design element and maybe someone can help walk me through this. If I understand our um, class sizes correctly, like young, the, our sort of earliest learners, sort of K zero to second grade cap at twenty students. Then you go three to five, you're at twenty-five and then six becomes twenty-eight. So based on this model, the classroom sizes would remain the same with an understanding that there's attrition and then new students come into the school. But it wouldn't allow for sort of growth. Normally when I think of like schools strands like this, you would have like an additional K early grade that then would filter down, but then the same thing would happen sort of three to five. I'm, I'm just sort of curious how we think about student enrollment and class size in this model because it doesn't account for it in a way that's visible. So that might just help me in thinking about how we're thinking about instruction and programming. And then I guess one more question to add in there and then also how that is also juxtaposed with uh, some of the contractual dynamics that came up with the BTU around inclusion programming. And max class sizes.
So Drew or Dell, do you want to take that question on this slide?
I apologize. I'm not fully understanding the question.
Well, could you maybe? Like in this model, for example, and I'm pointing at my screen, like you can see where I'm pointing in K zero, K one, right? If I have two classes, those would max at twenty students. Those students would move to twenty to, that, that K two model would still be twenty. First grade would still be twenty, second grade would still be twenty, but by third grade I have twenty-five kids in a class. And so I would either have needed an additional, I would then need an additional classroom to take the students who are being moved up through the K zero to two band. Unless there's data that tells us like we see, I don't know, like a dip in enrollment in third grade, but right now you wouldn't have, based on, it almost oversimplifies, right? You wouldn't have enough seats to hold the smaller class ratio that exist in the earlier grades. While those grades continue to grow and then you see that bump again, six through eight. And so even in the five to six model, like our sixth grade classrooms, based on how I understand it, I could be totally wrong. But the sixth grade classrooms are also bigger than the fifth grade classrooms. And so like, it isn't sort of an even two or an even four. It's actually like a two to a three to a four, sort of, it sort of, it would sort of funnel. I would, I guess I would sort of upside down. I don't know. And then I'm sort of, sort of curious about how we're thinking about that. And then I guess at the same time, how you then think about any of the class size ratios for students with disabilities based on the BTU contract we negotiated. And if there's any implications there around max class sizes. Which I thought were twenty-five for inclusion classes, but again, like I, I could also not be remembering correctly.
Yeah, let me take a uh, shot at, at uh, this. It's a really thoughtful question and thank you. The clarification um, really helped me more fully understand um, I think the important point that you're driving. Um, then we'll also just defer to the superintendent in case she has any additional um, content, of course. But I, I think the way that I look at this is that this was uh, supposed to be a very simplistic sort of model of what um, the sort of strand structure uh, could look like in a school with the left being the sort of most minimal that we would ever expect in a BPS school for us to deliver. And then one that's a little bit more sort of, um, I think preferred, particularly as we start to think uh, about this in, to the future. I, I do think uh, that there's a number of sort of relevant things here. Obviously, um, the work of our panda team, which is our planning uh, and assessment uh, team needs to sort of really take into account um, the specific enrollment of each one of this, of the specific schools. Not only that we're talking about this evening, but sort of more broadly across BPS. The other point that I think um, may not be um, obvious on the slide, but I think is really important um, is that we really have to consider how we ensure that there's space in the inclusive classrooms so that there are opportunities for partial inclusion throughout the day for students that are in the, in this model, the substantially separate placement. And putting that in the context of the class size uh, requirements uh, that you've mentioned, which I think are fairly accurate to the BTU contract. I don't know Superintendent, if you have any additional thoughts on this. I think it's a really good question and would probably want our panda team to speak more on this as well.
Yeah, no, I was going to suggest that I think Nate can certainly jump in here. Um, on behalf of enrollment. Um, but I, but I also think that um, sometimes I, I do think it's an interesting question. I think sometime. I think we may have someone outside of the, one of the rooms.
Is, is anybody else hearing the interpreter but not the English?
I'm, I'm hearing the interpreter.
Yeah, and it's just gone away.
Okay. Um, so I think Nate can, I think we'll, we'll have Nate just speak on the peer enrollment, but I think sometimes what has happened in the past when we have like more classrooms at the lower levels and the theory is that then those collapse um, as they go up is that it doesn't leave room for students who are moving in at other class, at other grade levels. And it leaves these partially filled um, that you can't collapse neatly. Um, and so that's, that's exactly what we're trying to eliminate with the enrollment. Um, is, is those kind of half-empty classrooms. So I think that's the reason why you're seeing kind of the, in a clean way, the two strand. It leaves room for as IEPs are developed um, or a student shift and move the ability um, for students to come in and to come out, but to never exceed the capacity of those two classrooms. Um, and Nate, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to that. I can't see, I can't see because the speaker panel is on. I think Nate.
I was, um, my microphone was inactivated. We're having some fun.
We're having some fun here. The, the only thing I'll just add is from the class size, when, when we designed an inclusion program and particularly with the new inclusion language in the contract, the class sizes don't tend to fluctuate as the grade levels move up. So the bump out that you were talking to in third grade and sixth grade are for gen ed programs in inclusive settings. They tend to move up as cohorts to create the right space. And I think Drew mentioned two things about the two versus four is it gives us more flexibility to do groupings and cross classroom collaboration and flexibility where we have a lot of challenges with students moving in and out of programs. Our schools that have one program next to one gen ed classroom or an SCI classroom, an English learner classroom with a specialized classroom, and it creates such a restrictive environment that we end up holding empty space or not being able to accommodate a student in their existing school. And so in these models that they're presenting here, it allows us to have the flexibility to not only provide more inclusive opportunities from the start of school to the end of school, but to think about inclusion as a continuum throughout the day and have students move in for the classes and opportunities that they're, they're able to be supported in and then also receive the intervention space, interventions and other resources in other classrooms at different points in the day.
Interesting thing, I, I'll put a pin in this one. This one is hard for me to understand because it, I feel like it would actually limit that sort of movement, like as class ratios increase, you would have more empty seats, which would create a structural deficit, like.
Yeah, that structural deficit definitely, we, we see that challenge exists particularly K to sixes and K to eights, where you don't see as much movement in those upper grades. But again, with the design of the inclusion programs and the way that they're sort of funded differently, it accounts for class sizes differently and doesn't create that structural problem. And so these designs were kind of proposed as sort of, again, Drew mentioned, there's, there's simplified models, but they take into account the way that students would actually navigate and flow, both as they progress through grades and also as they're navigating an IEP, their individualized needs and the programming that exists at the school.
And for schools that have, have a language specific strand, a bilingual strand, then what will happen is as students attain greater levels of English, they then have the movement to be able to go into the gen ed classroom.
Yeah, maybe this will also make the, this, when we haven't had that sort of inclusion presentation yet. So maybe that will also make sense to us, how you're thinking about sort of day programming when that happens. I have definitely used my time, so I'll hold for the next round for my questions. Thank you.
Dr. Alkins?
Thank you. I guess to start off, how has the community responded to just the general proposal of mergers? And understanding the benefits or the pros and cons of the K to six, seven to 12 merger? Because from what it sounds, from what I'm interpreting from public testimony and this previous conversations is that it seems like there's still some reticence around buy-in like to, to this. So I'm just wondering what, what has been the challenges just to shifting to the K to six, seven to 12 model?
Right, so I think, I think Rebecca and Dell, if you want to speak to just kind of the direct work with the community.
Sure, I can, I can start. So in the, the design team meetings, you know, the I, as we have, I think what has been really helpful is that people have given feedback of what are the things that feel really unclear? What are the parts that people would like commitments to? And we've gotten deeper into what those commitments could be. And actually, if I could give one example that we haven't yet heard in the presentation. So like, for example, with the Shaw Taylor community. One of the things that was raised is that there have to be resources that stay in the community even after consolidation. And so one of the pieces that's in the proposal is that with the consolidated classrooms, and again, it, it could look different ways. And Drew showed how there were different configurations and that those need to be figured out with the school communities. But let's say, for example, that two classrooms were consolidated. That would be a little over $300,000. And that money will then stay with the Shaw Taylor. The reason why I bring that up here is that this process is, is really difficult. And, you know, we mourn loss and so we need to hold that. And at the same time, I feel like communities are hearing how we'll both meet their needs and how we'll shift to make sure that communities get what they need, including things like resources staying in the building or shifted enrichment. And so there has been change on the design team of how people are engaging. I know we heard from some design team members tonight. But part of what some of them were saying also is that it's not a no vote. It's that we still have things to work on. And I feel like this proposal is very much thinking, how do we continue to shift and be nimble with communities? And so we're, we're starting to, to feel, you know, as I've been out in the communities, feeling a shift in how people are responding and we still have pieces to work on so that people understand the process.
And so to that, I probably, and I may have missed this, but the design team itself includes community members. Okay, yeah, in my, in my, okay. And I, because I guess my, my real question was getting to the power dynamics that are at play, whereas community voice is just being heard versus their actual representation and power to make a decision. And that's sort of what I, what I've been hearing in testimonies regarding sort of just feedback, either that's not being taken into consideration in a very substantial way. So I just want to be clear that that's, there's actual representation, powerful representation from the design team perspective.
There is, yes. And the design teams and school communities were also asked to make shifts in design team members to make sure communities were represented. And so we're working very hard to make sure we have a good representation of voices and community members.
Okay, alright, yeah.
If I can just jump in and add to what Rebecca shared. I think that one, that going through these, this process is like, just like not easy for our school communities. Like we're going through the process, there is the merging school, when we're thinking about merges and merging school communities and also thinking about like longer term outcomes, there are some students that are, that, that when thinking through the process that are we're merging school communities so that students can have better outcome in the short, short term. While we're thinking about also like longer term outcomes for students, there are some students, students that are going to benefit like in the immediate and also thinking about things for in the future as we continue to improve the process. And I know that like, it feels like for some of our families, like it's morning loss and we need to sit with that and we need to hold that. However, the design teams does include parents, teachers and other members of our communities. We've been really intentional about making sure the design teams are representatives of school, representative of our school communities. Part of the ways we've been listened and learned and responded to feedback is just making sure that there's a consistent place and channel for feedback through this process. Also, we've been meeting and Rebecca has been leading a lot of this work weekly with our design teams, getting feedback and making shifts in improving, improving our engagement process throughout this process. And I think from the time I've started in my role and getting feedback from the community, it feels like the tone may be shifting, but also I think that we also need to recognize that one, we're looking for better outcomes for our students, but it is a hard process for our community. And it's important for us to continue to listen to our community, ensuring that they're at the table and making these shifts. Making, making these shifts to ensure better outcomes, but in collaboration with, with our, with our community, our school community and the broader community.
Thank you. I guess another thing is, is what then becomes the new capacity for each of these schools moving forward?
Are we able to put up, you want to just use one as an example, Dr. Alkins? Like we can put up.
That's, 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 that's fine. I guess what I'm, what I, I mean, yes, it's sort of like this, this strategy definitely like stems the bleeding. I'm just thinking about over, over a longer period of time when as enrollment continues to decline. I mean, I, I mean, obviously it's not a cure all for, for, for this. So if I'm understanding the problem like also correctly, we'll be able to afford more programming, more specialists, being able to fund those types of positions. But still, if enrollment continues to decline, you're, you're still going to have this issue. I mean, I might be misunderstanding it though.
No, I think, I mean, I, I think that's, that's accurate. I, I think it depends on the, the school, like the area, the city and the school communities of like how quickly the enrollment declines. But I think the idea of leveraging the, the resources from the empty seats is to better the quality of the experience and the education of the students now. And there's, it, it won't be felt like if those classes aren't like they are now, like if, if, say they through attrition, they become 80% full or 75% full. It's not like it is now where you have in one, you know, in, in one school, like a third empty seats. In another school, almost half empty seats. So I think when you get to that level of attrition, it, it just, it without putting in the injection of dollars that we've put in over the last, you know, three to four years, you can't even steady the school for basic needs. So the, the idea, I think on the enrollment by going to either the two or the four is there may still be some flux in the enrollment, but it's not going to be at the capacity level where it actually like impacts the basic needs and day to day capacity of the school. And maybe it's best like to look at an example. So I, I don't know who, if it's Megan that has the presentation up. But if somebody can put the presentation up and maybe go to the slide, the capacity slide. I think Dell, you were walking through that one. I don't remember the number, but it's, you know, it should, I think, I think you to look at one of the specific school examples and the empty capacity. And then in the new capacity. Yeah, either one.
I think just to answer the question directly, I think as it relates to the Shaw and Taylor, we're looking somewhere between 36 to 39 classrooms. And as it relates to the Philbrick and Sumner, we're looking at about 35 classrooms. My colleague Nate Cooter, who's way better at math than I am, could run the numbers and tell you what the sort of enrollment projections are for that.
Dr. Alkins, I think, I think what you're, you're asking is in, in that new capacity, what happens when enrollment continues to shrink? So that that new capacity actually, that the, the actual enrollment will fall underneath that, right? I think that's what you're sort of asking us. Yeah. So I think, I think the question for Panda is in, in the calculation of the new capacity, like what, where do we feel will hit the mark in terms of percentage of filling those seats?
Yeah, thank you. And I think so part of the idea of the consolidation of, of the smaller schools. What we see is that the smallest schools that we have, which, you know, some of our single strand schools like the Philbrick or smaller schools like the PH Shaw are much more sensitive to enrollment. Because the, it, it really, it functions as a sort of percent of their overall budget that would be adjusted on a per pupil basis. So we see these medium sized schools that have four to six strands per grade. As enrollment declines, they're able to make more adjustments and consolidate classrooms much easier or open new classrooms and, and, and as we need to. And so that's what, you know, in, in our current scenario, we have a lot of very, these very tiny schools. If enrollment declines, you can't consolidate a third grade classroom into another third grade classroom without closing a school. So we have to have these big conversations that are very disruptive to a school community and school identities. Whereas in the example that's on the screen and the PH Shaw merged, if we saw a decline, decline in gen ed enrollment in a third or fourth grade, you could start to consolidate more of those classrooms and not disrupt the full school community and adjust the staffing accordingly. So that part of the rationale around the sort of medium sized schools and the enrollment of four to 600 or about four to six strands per grade, is this idea of being more flexible as enrollment declines? As a system, sort of larger, right now, we're at a critical point where we have so many classrooms that are less than 50% school full. And even more than that, so many schools that have classrooms that are 50% or less full, which means that all of our schools are dealing with this strain of enrollment as opposed to us taking some of the structural changes that we need to make to leverage our resources and stop spreading our resources so thinly across the number of schools that we have.
And then Nate, was there a calculation, like in, in either of these examples, where the combined classrooms and the new capacity, like what rate of fill that would result in versus what had previously existed?
I'm, I'm, I'm going to vamp for a moment to see if I can get that answer from the team right now. But I will just say, part of it does depend on the inclusion programs as designed by the teams as they go through this. So part of the reason we're asking for a vote so early is so that the teams can really work through what the programming at the school is going to be. But overall, what we're going to be able to do is create more full classrooms in this. And we anticipate reducing a lot of the old harmless that are needed at both of these school communities. And then again, as the team mentioned earlier, that there will be trade offs that will go from maybe core classrooms to more specialists or interventionists in some of the models that we're talking about with more inclusive practices. And so we can, we can provide this sort of anticipated or, or sort of projected fill rate change at the schools, but we don't have that for you this evening.
Mr. Trang?
Hi. I understand that at, at this late hour, everybody is stressed. Of course, I'm stressed as well. So rather than, I, I know that there are going to be many, many other questions going forward. You know, in finding a way to implement these joint schools projects. I have a very, very basic question, rather, it's not a question, but it's, it's, it's an appreciative comment that I would like to extend to the staff in coming up with a very thorough plan. I'm, I'm, I'm sure that everybody had put in a lot of hours and knowledge as well, as well as research in coming up with, with a plan. As I said, it will also be cumbersome moving forward in implementing this plan. There, there are going to be. Uh, cumbersome moving forward in implementing this plan, that there are going to be nooks and crannies and. Issues that come along. Uh, and I'm very sure other members on, on the committee will find them out as well. But, um, my, uh. My comment is pretty much just relating to. Um. Slide number ten, the, the journey to a joint school com- uh, community. In, in that, uh, that slide. You presented to us a racial equity planning tool that has. Six buckets. I particularly like the first three. And I'm very sure that the budget planning, the resource advocacy and the community partnerships are. You know, are very crucial, um, and it will also be. A continuation of what we are going to do for, um, moving forward anyway. Uh, the shared core values, I'm, I'm sure the, uh, the administrative staff at those two schools are. Are, are, um. Are sought out for, for their, for their input as well as the community. The, you know, the, 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 the basic question is, there are so many. Racial equity planning tools out there. And, uh, I've, I've learned a few. I, I've come up with a few. I, I just, and I just would like to know. Who and how did you come up with this? Particular racial planning tool in applying to. This project. Um. How did you come? To the, uh, decision of laying out these six buckets. Rather than five or maybe seven. Uh, it, it, it just, you know, a, 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 a theoretical question. I, I, I do appreciate the fact that, that. You know, in my mind, it's a, it's a different way of looking at, uh, racial equity. Um, that I'm learning today. So I'm, I'm just, um, throwing out there a very. Uh, basic question just for my, uh. Adification. Thank you.
So I, I think it's a great question. I think, uh, Chief Granson, I think if you want to, um. Perhaps take that and talk about, um, how the rep in this particular process is being applied.
Um, Superintendent Skipper, before, um, Chief Granson, um, jumps in. I think actually this slide might be a little bit misleading, so I'm gonna give a little bit of context in the slide and then pass it over to, um. Uh, Dr. Granson. Um, the, the six different buckets are the buckets of work that the schools would need to engage in throughout this process. Woven into each one of those is the racial equity planning tool that has been developed. Um, by Boston Public Schools and, um, by Dr. Granson's department. And so this is, um, a process and woven into it, uh, is that arrow. Um, so I'll, I'll now tag team, but I, I feel like maybe the slide was also misleading.
Um, thanks for that and, and thanks for that question. Um, so we have, um, in BPS over the last, I would say, five-plus years, been developing out. The racial equity planning tool, um, it started as a partnership. With the city of Boston, who was also developing their, um, processes around advancing racial equity. And, um, some initial sort of visits and conversations with Seattle Public Schools at the time. And other places sort of gave birth to the six steps, um, outlined in the tool. Um, we always say that it's, it's a tool, right? So it's, it's, it's not law, but it's a great guide and process. Um, and we've been able to develop a rubric around the tool as well. Um, and as a part of our racial equity impact. Uh, planning committee have gotten some feedback from, um. Some external stakeholders, community advocates, parents, teachers, school leaders, to continue to sort of refine the tool. Uh, and we have our racial equity leadership training, which we're doing with all eleven thousand BPS employees. Um, that sort of gives the foundation around the tool and then part B of that training is mandatory for supervisors. And so they get trained on a tool as well. Um, so those steps, I think the center of the tool and there's a whole sort of background around the tool. Rests on the idea that those most impacted by decisions. From organizations like the Boston Public Schools should be at the table. Um, and that they hold the expertise in, in terms of what's best for their community and their students. Like most families and caretakers. Um, and in some cases, when we're talking about decisions that not only affect students, but it affects, impact staff. That those individuals are also at the table for, uh, decision-making. So. We always rest what we do in data as educational leaders. We make a very clear statement about what we're trying to achieve, the step one. Um, step two is the data, step three is the engagement, and then how do we achieve either very clear? Um, or develop very clear racial equity strategies. Or overall educational equity strategies are students with disabilities, are multilingual learners. Um, and then when anything that we say we're gonna do and that we have a goal for, that we have a very clear and public. Um. Accountability plan, action plan, work plan that we make available to the public, uh, to hold us accountable along the way.
Thank you. It's clear.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez.
All right, I'm gonna try to go fast. And I promise I'm gonna get to school-specific questions in a second. I'm just, have some questions on process. One, thank you for slide nine. You know, I've been emphasizing my concern around our, our. Staffing shortage. Um, anytime I voted no on this body, it's always been in connection to. My fear that we are further sort of exasperating a, a staffing. Problem across our system. So I'm, I. I heard you superintendent that like there will be more of these. These are decisions that are gonna, we're gonna be facing as a body. Um, and this is a big part of it. And for me, as a parent and also as an educator. Like there is nothing more important. We can talk about everything all day, but there's like nothing more important than having a teacher in front of a kid. And we'll never narrow the achievement gap if we have young folks sitting in classrooms without certified teachers. And so. There's like an urgency for me, not to just do one or two at a time, but like to really do everything humanly possible. To move the workforce to the right place, and that may mean consolidating classrooms and consolidating schools. So that we can do it. And I'll say the thing I always say, like, you would not hear the end of it from me if my child was spending. A year or six months or four months without a teacher certified in their classroom across any grade level. Um, and we have a problem. So like you have me there and I just really appreciate the honesty. I feel like it's a conversation we've avoided. Before your arrival. Um, and so I really just appreciate your, you know, being sober about it with all of us. Uh, as we move into slide ten, there's the, the. Which was referenced earlier. I won't ask you to pull it up because we won't go through that dance again, but. I, I heard a lot about sort of the virtues to expect, like the sort of things we wanna do, the commitments we wanna make. And all really good and well-intentioned. I guess, you know. I'm a stuff and things guy, like I like to know like hard numbers, like what can I see? Show me some receipts. And so, and I get that sometimes that's a floor, but like in each of those categories. Uh, there were meetings that are promised or sort of community activities that are being proposed. Or expectations of design teams to be part of. And I worry that part of the confusion that we haven't further clarified tonight is that. Even in this presentation, I still. You asked me to join a design team today. I still don't really know what I have to show up for, even if it's the floor. There's gonna be, I wish I could see the slide right now. There's gonna be three, at least three meetings to talk about academics. At least th- two meetings to talk about, uh, you know, school climate, at least. For me, I don't know, I'm just making something up, right? But like, whatever it is that is like the stuff and things, I think people are hungry. Not just for our virtues and our values, but like for the literal, what they can expect in the process. And I don't know if that exists, and maybe we can talk about it a little more, sort of like each step. And if it doesn't, if that's like something we can commit to offering communities, even knowing, and I heard. Uh, Rebecca shared this earlier, that like there has to be some flexibility, like some communities may require more, some may require less. But there's like a floor that we are, like, there's a table that's being set and like, we can add, we can add more to that table if we need to. But like, here's our sort of baseline commitment. Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, no, totally. And I, 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 I think, um, I think you're right. I think like as we get into this work, right? Communities wanna be at the table at each step. Um, and so being clear what the commitment looks like is important. Um, Dell and Rebecca, I know that in, in, it's actually, I think, slide eleven, um, the journey to the joint school community. Um, on that one, you know, I know you were just sort of looking at the milestone pieces. Um, but like in it, as an example, in either of the merger, uh, proposed mergers. Um, have we been able to kind of set out like how many meetings we would be doing to form the shared? Core values, how many meetings we would be focused on the academics and climate? Um, I know that you on the date, on the calendar piece, you sort of gave, uh, gate ranges, um, for them.
Um, I'll start and then, um, Dell, please, um, jump in. So, um, yeah, so what you'll see is the timelines are, um, really the buckets around the design team. So that week one, that week three and that week five are design team meetings. What we know about, um, joining school communities is that, um, there will have to be work also. Um, with the school communities and, and thinking through, I mean, this is talking about both the school leaders and also the teachers, you know, as we're thinking about. Like the academic programming, for example, those will, there will need to be working groups as well as the design team. So the design team very much helps with, um, community engagement, um, helps in keeping a pulse on. What, um, families and community members are thinking about, um, doing some of the, the upper level work such as the shared core values. Um, but some of that academic programming will happen within the school communities as well. So like, for example, um. Uh, the, the school superintendents have been working on, um. You know, what curriculum looks like in different core content areas. And so they would help guide the, the school communities to, um. To figuring out what the district-aligned curriculum looks like for now the joined school community. Uh, for Sumner Philbrick. They actually are using much of the same, um, Shaw Taylor also is in certain grades and then in other grades, they're gonna have to make decisions. Of what that might look like together. And so, um, Brandon, to answer your question, it's, it's kind of a combination. You know, you can see the. The buckets of time, if this is a year-long process, where like, for example. Um, shared core values, the teams have been working on that right now from March to May. And part of that was also building community and getting to know each other. When you look at the academics bucket. It's May through September, so that's two of those eight-week cycles. But within there, there were, there will have to be additional working groups, um, and support of those teams.
Thanks, Rebecca, um.
Just a quick question before you go, just to further clarify. On, so if I'm looking at slide ten, those are cycles?
Um, they are. So there's, um, you know, the eight-week bucket of time that I was talking about? Yep. Okay, so like, yep, so in the proposal. Um, like if you look, for example, at the academics, climate and culture. Um, do you see how there's the May, then a dot, then September?
Hmm.
That actually is two eight-week cycles. Can I go old school and show, um, a picture up to my screen? Okay, so do you see, do you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that actually equates, see those dots?
Yeah.
Equates to. That eight-week cycle.
That makes sense.
So like, for example, academics, uh, climate and culture, we know that it. Both the climate and academics are the grounding foundation for school communities. And so that actually is going to take more time and really that lays the foundation so that then the school communities continue to work on those pieces.
I, I wonder, this is just a wondering, and then Dell, I know I cut you off, so you should cut me off in a second. But I wonder then, just based on what we're hearing in community feedback, is there something sort of more pithy? That we can offer folks that like really like names, like these, I don't know, like here are our cycles, this is how long it takes. This is what. The design team is working on. This is what will happen through town halls. This is what's being done at a school level through working groups. Like with like what is being produced, because I think it's feels so, and this is the hardest part about. School mergers, school closures, consolidations, colocations, like. I think people are just left being like, I don't know what is next and. And I worry that like, and sometimes even here, like we talk about like the values and not the thing that's getting produced. And I think sometimes, like when it's your baby, it's like, I love going through the values, but like, I wanna hear what you're asking me to produce. As a community and by when. Does that make sense? Dell, were you, I cut you off, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, that's okay. Um, I just wanted to first start off by saying like, um, I think that's, um. A great point and a point well taken, Brandon. Um, thank you for that. Uh, as Rebecca, um, laid out, we're laying out. A proposed schedule for, um, community meetings on a regular, um, cadence so that families can plan in advance. Um. But we also know that we need to broaden our engagement beyond more structured, um, public meetings. We know from past experience that, uh, public meetings don't generally bring in all voices, particularly those who speak. A language other than English. Um, as a, as a team, we're committed to holding language-specific meetings in smaller formats and one-on-one conversation. And we're actually already started, um, doing some of this. The capital planning team is also really committed to being creative in our strategies. Um, talking to people in B C Y F centers during pickup and drop-offs, other places where families gather. So we can be sure to reach, um, people where they are through this process.
That makes sense. I, I think too, like, not to just be too, like, too much of a hammer on this. But like, you know, like our school committee meetings are scheduled a year in advance. Like, we know when they're happening. And so I will, I think we would. Get a lot out of that type of structure. Where every week we're here, listening to folks tell us that a meeting wasn't scheduled or it was rescheduled or it's. They still don't know when the next one is. And some of that may be true, some of that may be confusion. I, I, it's not even worth debating, but what is definitely true is that there's not a calendar. With clear milestones around like when people are meeting around given issues. And if needed, we'll add more. But there's not even the baseline of like, this is what's happening when. In English, in Spanish, in Haitian Creole, in, in any of the languages, right? Um, and I think that is part of what is driving some of the. The frustration and anxiety as well. It's like, when am I gonna get to see you next? I know.
Uh, Brandon, can I say one more thing?
Yes.
Um, you know, having that type of eight-week cycle allows communities to know each time you're coming back. And I think it's important, um, you know, to just. Say one more time that it's not just about the community meeting, it's also the things that happen around that. And even having, you know, if we're still thinking about that eight-week cycle, that week six through eight is all different types of engagement. So that people can engage in the way that they most see fit and want to enter into the process. The other piece, and this goes back to what you were talking about before, and having, um, allocated amounts of time. One of the things that has been a challenge with the design team is that meeting weekly is strenuous. Um, and both on, uh, the team supporting, uh, the families, the educators. And so, um, this actually allows us to be really thoughtful about what the design team looks like. Does it look different at different times? What do the working groups look like? Um, and part of the beginning of the proposal of this, uh, journey to a joint community talks about. The reflect and the refine and the record. And part of that is being thoughtful about having a process that is well documented. And we're asking the Philbrick and Sumner and Shaw and Taylor to be deep partners in this work. So that then, you know, the things that you're talking about are what are the commitments, what are the amounts of meetings? By recording and reflecting and refining throughout, it then sets a process for future uh, communities. So while there's a bit of um, still building and need to be flexible and nimble, like you said earlier, um, asking the, the communities to partner with, with us in building this process makes it so that other communities benefit from a recorded process happening. Um.
It, it does also sort of beg the question for us in Boston. Like where, where are we leveraging philanthropic partners in this work? Like, we sat through public testimony tonight around uh, Boston Arts Academy. And so much of that success was that sort of public partnership with philanthropic commitments. And like, in this sort of heavy lift, is there a way that we're thinking about that leveraging resources from folks externally, but also really like tapping in on the philanthropic community to support this design process?
That's like a
stipends or whatever for folks, you know, I love, I'm always talking about putting folks and money in people's pockets, right? Like, there's, is there, they're there and are we exploring it?
Yeah, no, I, I'm glad you brought that up, um, because, uh, for instance, Boston Schools Fund has been a partner with us in some of this work um, previously. And I think they've done, you know, a bunch of research on, um, you know, merger process and what that looks like in, in the su- the support to the communities. So they're an example of a partner that we're having conversations with, right, to be able to help. Cause as this gets going, you know, even with this robust as our team will become, um, we're, I think we're still going to need to leverage as many of the resources to help support the process and the communities involved.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a, you know, it's a lot of free labor from folks. And so I'm always curious, like if you really want to change who gets to show up to the meetings, there is a, you know, there's a way to leverage some of the sort of big players in the philanthropic community. Given that this is probably one of the greatest strategic problems facing our system. Right? And we have to be really honest about that, that like, you know, this is not just four schools coming together, this is going to be much bigger than that.
This is a systems problem.
Absolutely. And I, I hear that.
I have a couple of questions and then we'll go do another final round. Um, one of the things I was wondering, are we going to publish this journey to a joint school community? So that others um, who will be going through this process will have the benefit of this learning and input before they are actually in the process. I think, um, it was very rich. It makes, you know, it has a lot of pieces that will help people to understand the what and the why, but would hopefully that people would, you know, are two schools now who are going through this, you know, are building it for us. But it would be great to have others who may see themselves being able to start asking some questions and do some preliminary work before their actual, you know, time begins in the process. Yeah. So I don't know whether that was just a slide or what, what was the plan for that particular piece?
So, so a lot of that material is available publicly now, but I think to your point, Chair, it's, you know, putting it in a format that it's like a roadmap, um, you know, almost like a training.
Workbook, whatever.
Right, that's right. Um, and so Rebecca, Dell, I don't know if you want to speak to, I'm thinking about that. Um, but I would imagine with the quality of what you're producing, both in thinking and material, that, that would be well worth, um, you know, our investment to do.
Um, I, I agree. Um, and since, um, as stated, uh, through the um, these are not just like the only mergers that we're going to be doing um, as a district. Um, as we get back, as we get back, like the K through, uh, the K-12 um, study and our facilities condition assessment plan. And we, we come up with sort of like our district-wide um, facilities plan. Um, and we think, and we continue um, this uh, the merger process. I do think that having that playbook, um, just like that we can continue um, to, to go back to. Um, I think that we can have things in there like some of our learned experiences and also, um, as different districts are looking at the same thing that there, they can have access to um, this information as well. So I think that it's a really good idea for us to think through and sort of build a roadmap that also the public can access as well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Can you tell me about the, the number of strands that are right now proposed for each of these two mergers?
Um, it depends on sort of like the academic programming, but um, it's four to five for each of the schools.
Right. And thinking about the physical spaces, will the new um, Irving School be able to, you know, be a prime example of an inclusion program with all of the spaces, et cetera? I mean, it didn't start out that way when you were first beginning this process. And I guess my question is, how has the, the notion of it being a full inclusion school shifted or changed um, the layout? And then, you know, and will we be able to have the classrooms plus all the extras? In, you know, in the, the ability of the design that's being formatted?
Um, thanks for that question, Chair. Um, yes, uh, the um, the Irving School will have um, full-size gym. Um, some of the other spaces that you saw in the diagram earlier. We'll be finding opportunities to share um, the full design of the urban renovation with the full um, community soon in partnership with P F D. But um, there are going to be extra spaces that does, that currently that these schools um, don't have access to, but will have access to in, in the new urban um, buildings.
Okay. So at the end of the design, um, the facilities planning process, will that come back to us with a plan that says how many, you know, two-strand or four-strand elementary schools will need, you know, how many, you know, X number, I don't know how you figure out the strands in high school. But will it come back to us with something so that we sort of have a map of where we're trying to head the district in total? That will give us some opportunity to help schools, you know, the issue around the mergers. Just kind of about how we share this sort of knowledge about where we're heading.
Um, that's a good question again. Um, I think it's important to recognize, it's not just um, the facilities, um, the facilities uh, condition of uh, assessment plan um, decision here. Um, some of this depends on how we do um, uh, some of our inclusion planning. Um, as we implement inclusion, it will continue um, to be important for our team to work really closely with the academics team. Um, with uh, the special education. Um, the Office of Multi uh, Lingo Education and other departments. This is really about reimagining how our schools um, serve students. And also like how the capital, capital planning team can build the physical um, footprint to support um, the academic vision.
Okay. I would look at it, Chair, that the, the facilities condition is going to tell us what buildings are capable of or not. The enrollment will tell us some of our needs. And, and we have to look at inclusion in particular and bilingual um, education as sort of the content inside of it, you know, to determine how we're going to take our capacity, our enrollment, and have that make sense for the communities in the different areas, in the different regions. So it's the facilities conditions is essential because it's going to tell us which buildings aren't going to be able to support much at all. Which buildings can and can be invested in and what does that space look like? But ultimately, the academic programming is, and the enrollment is what kind of needs to drive the merger proposals, closures.
Yeah. But I guess what I, I'm still asking is at what point in this process will be, will we be willing to say? You know, and besides that, we're going to be a K to six, seven to 12, uh, how many two-strand schools or how many four-strand schools and where they are, you know, all of those things so that we all have sort of a vision. Because otherwise it just feels unsettling every time that we, we don't know.
Well, I mean, I think, I think what we've said consistently is that the facilities condition that's going to come out, um, you know, shortly in the spring. Along with um, the pre-K to six, seven to 12 design, that'll come out in the fall. Um, and then the master, the master facility plan, those are the kind of the three big puzzle pieces um, to putting together, you know, what you're sort of looking for, which is the ultimate blueprint. Um, it doesn't mean that we can't make, nor will we make some decisions ahead of that. Um, you know, where the decisions can be made, but um, but I think in terms of what you're looking for, which is sort of this the 10,000-foot view, um, you know, I think we need those three puzzle pieces in place. Um, as we've, as we're sort of evolving our inclusion plan as well.
Do we have any data that talks about the outcomes in classrooms that right now are under-subscribed? So I'm not sure how many classrooms we have that may have, you know, 15 kids or less. And I guess I'm trying to understand, are they benefiting from that in terms of their outcomes? I mean, it's one thing to say the school is under, you know, enrolled, but if that means some children are benefiting from smaller classes, can, do we see a benefit there?
So, I don't, that would have to be one that I think we would have to think about what we could give you, um, like concretely. I would say that we know from our transformation schools that the, that they tend to often be under-enrolled. Um, I think the, while it may be that students have a, like a rarity of how they're performing in the classroom, what we know about the overall school is that they generally don't have the resource because of that under-capacity um, to do the things that a school that does have capacity can do for students. Um, you know, right now, we're plugging that deficit, we're plugging that hole. So it's hard to say whether a student is going without or not, right? Because we're, we're making sure they don't. Um, but as we get into the reality of Esther going away and us not having, you know, this absorbent amount of money to be able to plug that gap, um, that kind of disparity is going to show itself more and more and more. Um, but we can ask, we can ask the transformation.
Yeah.
You know, to do like a couple of school kind of quick analysis to see um, if there is anything, you know, relative to that.
Yeah. Okay. My last question, and you know, again, is another data request. I know we hear often people talking about these changes are disproportionately impacting black and brown students. Our district is 78% black and brown students. So do we have data that shows schools that have more than 80% black or brown students in them? And where they're located and what, you know, as we look at how they will be impacted, can we look at that? And can, on the other side, can we look at schools that are more proportionally, I mean, we have um, Asian and white students combined are 22%. Do we have, you know, can we identify the schools where there is a significantly larger, wider Asian population than what they exist in the overall school population and how those schools are, will or are impacted by these changes? We're just being good to just to, to know for every school sort of what is going on there because, you know, as we're looking at this, we can see whether this is true or whether, you know, what, or what you could do to mitigate some of those issues.
Yeah. Yeah. Similar to the slides, Dell, I think similar to uh, the collapsed slides.
Yeah.
Show the individual schools, their demographics, um, special education, M L E.
Right.
And then what happens when you merge them, um, I think to be able to kind of overlay performance on that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go back to Mr. Cardette Hernandez.
I think Mr. Tran had his hand up.
Oh, okay. He took it down, but okay.
I took it down, thank you.
Yeah.
Perfect. Um, two questions, actually, and I, that might conclude me. Um, famous last words. The first one, I guess, is to, a piggyback off of Chair Robinson's question. Um, I think, and I'm sure you feel this pressure superintendent, like everyone is looking for the roadmap of the portfolio of schools. And I think it includes everything you said, plus new construction commitments, right? And um, I guess, given, and I am trying to hold you to something, I guess, is why I'm asking it. But like, given what we know is coming, the data we have, the various pieces to this puzzle. Like, when will that roadmap exist? Even if, you know, like, this is a ever-changing system and the needs of buildings change. And all of that is real, like, we're never going to build the system and then it's done. That's also, you know, how we got into this mess, right? Like where we're just, we're not thinking in sort of real time about needs. But as you think about building that roadmap, like when would that be something available to the public?
So, I mean, I think this is the part that as we're getting these, you know, these reports, you know, we're, we're trying to internalize them and apply them with the goal of being able to build for the big picture. Um, I also think, you know, our district is one which I know our school committee is well aware, has a lot of moving parts right now. Based on all of the different data sets, this product, you know, the great, the Green New Deal work and rightsizing aside. So, you know, something like inclusion is evolving at the same time that it is, has to be phased into this project. So, um, you know, I think next year we can talk more concretely than we can this year because we will have more of the information to incorporate. Um, I don't, I honestly don't have an answer for you as to like when I could hand something over and say, this is, this is the plan. Um, but I do think that based on, you know, now through the end of next December, which is when we're getting the, the few big reports. Um, along with having made huge progress working on our inclusion and our bilingual um, plans. Um, we're going to be much further along in this, in the fall to be able to share more detail with school committee.
Copy. And I suspect you, it's like the part, I think, is sometimes the quiet part we haven't said here. I believe, and so this is me also, like, best intentions, right? Like, this is not about developing new and like, at, uh, new inclusion models. Uh, because there's like evidence-based inclusion practices, like we don't, someone's done the work for us. I think what I hear you saying is also like, as we think about disproportion, and maybe I'm mixing this up, so tell me if I'm wrong. But are you also saying is that it's also about mindset changes on the ground that have impacted dis- the disproportionality of students in uh, sub-separate classrooms that would then lead to shifting numbers inside of inclusion classrooms? Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, it's the adaptive work that we're talking about, which is all, you know, it's whether it's communities becoming one, whether it's inclusion on the ground and what that looks like and, um, you know, what that means for a family, what that means for a student experience and what that means for an educator. Um, that's the, that's the thing with B P S right now, is we have a ton of that kind of work to be done. And it has to be done hand in hand with each other. We can't go too far ahead in one area without making sure we're accounting for what, what that, what does that impact have on inclusion? What does that impact have on our bilingual plan? And so it's really trying to bring along these big plans. Um, this, you know, certainly the Green New Deal and, um, you know, the, the enrollment adjustment, rightsizing. Um, but it is intimately tied into, um, many of the Council of Great City Schools recommendations that we will be talking about and, and sharing with you guys um, at the next school committee meeting. Um, so there's, it, it's, um, it is, uh, it is one in which I think for the next several years, we are going to need to be in that space of evolving the plans together.
Yeah. I, two, were you going to say something, Chair?
I know that our interpreters are going to need to be leaving soon, so we want to try to wrap this up.
Got you.
Okay.
My actual last two questions as a result of this. One is just around school choice. And I think this is just as folks are sort of figuring out what And I think this is just as folks are sort of figuring out what happens in this process. If I'm a parent at a school that is now merging or consolidating. What choices, if that doesn't feel like the journey I wanna be on as a parent with my child? What choices do I have in other enrollment options?
Yeah, so I think that this was, you know, what the, what the team was speaking to of why it's so important to have an entire year in this process next year so that we can work with families, both, which, you know, to develop the choices with the merger, but to also give them information about other choices that they would have.
Copy. And I think that is really just helpful to hear, cuz like, this just, if there's gonna be a change, this may just not be the change I want. And I think that that is okay. And then, you know, folks get to make that that decision accordingly. I guess the my last, my truly last question tonight is, where, as I've been here, we've, I've only heard conversations about mergers and closures. And even in our new design work, like, I've never heard us talking about colocations as a strategy. Like, I don't know, build a new two thousand kid building and still allow for the six hundred to eight hundred kid school to exist. You know, I was the principal of a campus school with five schools in one building. Um, I was a teacher at two different schools with six and one had eight schools in a building. Um, and I, it just doesn't happen here. And there's other parts of the country where that's definitely more common. I don't know in this sort of redesigning if that is one of the options on the table. Cuz it give, it does both things, right? It allows people to hold on to small communities and it allows for economies of scale cuz you have big buildings with resources.
Yeah, so I um, uh, you know, I was a principal in the small schools movement, you know, when we did a lot of co-location. So we, you know, at that time, we took the big comprehensives, we broke them down, we had three, three or two small school communities. And that does still exist in pockets here, right? Um, I I don't think that we're eliminating that as an option. Um, I think that that could be a very viable option, you know, particularly like when you're talking about a merger at the high school level where you may have two very, very different schools um with different missions that um by its nature, you really can't consider a merger per se. So I don't think that that's off of the table. It's just that we haven't, at this point, kind of hit one. Uh, nor do we have, um, other than at the high school level, buildings big enough to fully really support that.
Copy. All right. That's my questions. Thank you so much and thank you to the team.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanna say thank you all, thank you Dell, thank you, everybody. Um, thanks. I know this is exhausting, but it's the most important work we could be doing at this period of time. And the committee looks forward to future updates. Um, the committee is scheduled to take action on these recommendations at our next meeting. Now we'll move on to public comment on reports, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers or public comment on reports.
All right, thank you. Any new business? Dr. Alkins?
Um, yes, this is just something that I was thinking about or have been thinking about since even joining the committee. A lot of the commentary that we've received, or at least that I've witnessed over the past year or so has been a lot around our transparency as a body, as a transparency as a district. And one of the things that has always struck me is that as a district, we don't really have a framework for what equitable collaboration actually means. Um, and really starting with a set of agreed upon principles from the community established by the community and or with the community. Um, in B P S, it has always seemed like it's been a sort of one-way exchange, even though we've offered channels for bidirectional communication. It has always seemed like it's just been B P S sort of feeding, this is what's going to happen. Here's where's your opportunity to make your voice heard. And so that really sort of undermines really the principle of what it means to truly collaborate. And so I'd be really interested to work with some folks um here um at a different time, uh, but working to sort of develop um principles, cuz I think it gets at your point uh, Brandon earlier about how what's an agreed upon baseline for how we interact with folks? And I think understanding that means that you have to start with bottom-up organizing first. And I just know that that's, that's not something that I've witnessed in B P S. And so I'd be willing to work with anyone who, you know, wants to put something like that together. So that at least communities, as they come into any space, know that B P S has agreed upon this. We've also agreed upon this as a, as a baseline for how we're going to have community discussion, decision-making, um, everything. And I think that i- i- it can start people on the right foot, if if we're talking about centering equity at every stage of the process. So I just wanted to, and on my heart, I just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah, thank you. That that's something that I really do think that we should look into. Thank you a lot. Um, any other new business? Herein, now that concludes our business for this evening. The next virtual school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, May tenth at five P M. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the role?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pedad Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lupera, Ms. Palanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes, and good night.
Mr. O'Neil, Ms. Robinson?
Yes, thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone.